Alright guys, I want everybody to silence your cell phones, devices, and everything. We're about ready to start. So at 6 o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item 2 is the invocation. Is Pastor Michael Orr here? I don't see him. Hadn't heard otherwise, okay. Do I have a volunteer? Anybody want to do the invocation? Anybody from the audience want to do the invocation? Feel them.
I'll do it, sir.
Alright, thank you Nick.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today and to be in your presence. Guide all of us today as we go through the business of Saginaw and ensure that we do it with open heart and open mind. In your name, I pray.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Well done. Item number 3 is honor participation. Any item that is listed on the agenda you may speak about, if it is a public hearing, you do not fill out a card. One of these cards, if it's a public hearing item, you do not fill this out. You can call once I call for speakers, which we will. And everyone will be able to speak on whichever item you choose. We can only speak on items that are listed on the agenda. Item number 4 is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of August 3rd. B is action regarding appointment of Crime Control and Protection District Board of Directors. C is action regarding approval of the individual project order with Kim Lee Horn for the belt mill pump station. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Charlie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Excellent, thank you all. Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. We have a full house, full council tonight, so thanks for coming, everyone. Alright, so moving forward, item number 5. At 6:02, we are in a public hearing. This continuation of the public hearing, proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, D22. We'll start with Gabe and then move to Kim.
Mayor and council, so we have a summary presentation this evening. It's all items you've seen in the past. For those in the audience, and as you might recall, we start our budget planning process pretty early. So we started talking about some of these issues in January. And then, as we get more information, we proceed to decision time, which is where we're at now. Once upon a time, I was a budget analyst and no good budget presentation. You know, they've all got to have swanky graphs, so there's a couple graphs here. If you have specific questions, please stop me. Happy to talk about them. Revenues and expenditures. It's the breakdown of the expenditures by category. Breakdown of general fund revenues. And then, general fund expenditures, which as you see are primarily by department.
Excuse me, Gabe, would you explain to the members of our audience what the difference is between each of these, what the titles of these slides mean? Like all funds, general funds?
That's a great point. Thank you for pointing that out. So, the city's budget is actually several budgets based on sources and uses, which is revenue and expenditure, depending on what fund that's in. So, the city's has two main funds. The general fund, which is tax-supported, sales tax and property tax, and has a business enterprise, the utility fund, which is funded by user fees. So, kind of flip through. This is a good one. So, this graph expenditures, all funds, personnel services, primarily staff and all the things needed to support staff and all funds. Capital outlays are our CIP projects or our construction projects that we do each year. Things like street grid construction, water sewer line replacement, that sort of thing. General operating budget is the one in red. We do transfers between funds based on cost allocation. So, for example, our utility fund, a portion of our utility fund makes a transfer to the general fund for administrative expenses for myself, finance director, and the services that are provided to that fund. General fund revenues, which again, I mentioned are tax-supported. It's the approximate breakdown. Property taxes and sales taxes are the vast majority of the revenues in the general fund. And then expenditures, pretty much by department, as is typical for most cities, the biggest departments and the biggest costs because of that are usually public safety. So I'll move forward to general fund ongoing expenses. And I'm not planning on reading each of these items unless you'd like me to. Few new positions, one new position in human resources, part-time animal shelter technician. You might recall from our last council meeting, we had an update on our summer apprentice program, which was really successful. We want to do it again, get students in the summer, plug them in. We have salary adjustments, 3% or midpoint of the range, which we've discussed since January of this year. Thankfully, we're in the second year of a two-year health insurance rate guarantee, so there's no increases there. And then, some of our workers' comp and other liability insurance increased.
Gabe?
Yep.
I have a question about the position you called inspector in training.
Mm-hmm.
You said that's an ongoing expense, so that person's going to be perpetually in training?
That's a great question. So, we had a employee from the Public Works Department move to building inspections. So, building, to be a building inspector, you have to be certified. So, part of the deal of moving to that position is you have to be certified within a certain amount of time. So, the in-training category is a little lower rate until he becomes certified. So, building inspectors, you have to pass a, Rick may know, is it plumbing, state board plumbing, some other things before you're set and on your own. So, that person that moved is in-training until he gets certified, and then he'll be bumped up to the building inspector salary.
I guess I'm confused as to why that's an ongoing expense.
It's a position. It's a person, a position, an employee, a full-time employee.
It's a salary.
It's a salaried employee.
Inspector in training is a salary.
But he will eventually, so you're looking for a new inspector position?
What we did is we had, yeah, it's a position, and it's basically on-the-job training until they're certified, and then they'll be bumped up higher in the grade.
Right, I guess I would add to that, it's just a reclassification after they meet the qualifications for a full inspector?
Right. But he's really an inspector position, but before he gets there, he's going to be in training. So, the inspector position is going to be the ongoing expense. The training is going to be a temporary, one-time expense until he achieves that position. That's why I have a problem with that job title.
Yeah, thank you. That's great to point out. You're right, they're in training until they meet the minimum, and then they'll become an inspector.
So you have, you're training for an inspector position?
Correct. A staff person move from Public Works to building inspections, and once they meet the requirements, which will probably be in the next fiscal year, they'll become a regular.
It may be semantics, but I mean, in my experience, for example, as an engineering professional, we have an engineer in training position in my previous employment. And once that person receives his license, then he gets promoted or reclassified into a professional engineer. So, I mean, whatever you call it, the mechanics are the same, it's just...
Yeah, it just sounded strange and bizarre to me. I mean, if you're really hiring for a new inspector, you know, even though you're going to train them to get up to that position, I mean, because I went through a lot of engineering training myself to be able to get to where I was. But I was not, you know, entry-level engineer my whole career. I managed to work my way up through it, but, I mean, if you're going to replace that person with another inspector in training immediately, perhaps that would be, anyway, just my two cents.
Understood. So we'll move on to the one-time expenses, which are not ongoing, they're specific to this budget year. Alert system, part of our dispatch, relationship with Fort Worth for Fire Station 2. Fire department is going to hold a staff banquet this year. We're proposing a police department K-9, which would be a narcotics K-9. Phase 4 of the ADA study.
So, Gabe, I sent you an email on the K-9.
Mm-hmm.
It's my understanding that's $50,000?
Right.
One time. I did some quick research on this, and I meant to reach out to you today. To be honest with you, I got busy. Just got back into town. But, can you, what little bit of research I did is, it costs about 50,000 to 60,000 to train a dog with the handler. The life expectancy of a working dog is averaged 10 years, so you can divide that out over 10 years. But there's a recurring cost of between 3,000 and 5,000 dollars.
3,000 and 5,000 dollars is what?
A year.
A year.
Okay. And some data that got, and there was a case that went to the Supreme Court back in 2013 that said, like, if you're using a narcotics dog around cars, like a lot of cities do and stuff, I don't know if that's what you all are going to use it for, they're up to 80% false positives. In other words, about 80% of the time, they go around a car, they don't, they, that basically gives a right to search your car without, that gives them probable cause. And I'm a little concerned about that with our citizens, that's very high. There's also been quite a few cases where they have actually bitten citizens and things like that. So, what kind of data do we have that tells us that we actually need a K-9 in Saginaw, and we couldn't just use, say, the one or two or three, I'm just pulling out of my head, I don't know, you could use it every week, maybe once a year, I don't know, that we couldn't just, because I know we have a good working relationship with Fort Worth, why couldn't we just, because I know your reply back to me said, we'd get a warrant first, so that implies we're not using it on cars. Why couldn't we then, if we're getting a warrant, just use Fort Worth?
Yeah, so, the K-9, using a K-9 for vehicle searches for drugs, let's say, doesn't change the elements that are necessary to make a case or make an arrest. It's just a heightened sense of the dog being a tool to locate things. So, we, a warrant, the dog could operate as a part of probable cause to obtain a warrant, or a part of a search pursuant to a warrant that already exists. So, one is not necessarily dependent on the other. It's just one element. I'm not familiar with the 80% data that you've spoken of. I would, I think I'm familiar with the case, if it's the same one that you cited to Gabe this afternoon. And that case was actually a Florida case, is that right? That case was actually overturned by, or, the Florida state ruling was actually overturned by the Supreme Court, by the US Supreme Court. But it, and the reason it, Florida found it that way is they were trying to set a new set of standards and rules that would apply to their state or to that particular case that they were ruling on, but that same set of rules and standards doesn't apply universally in Texas. So, I can get data for you on narcotics dogs if you'd like, I can look that up, I don't have it right off the top of my head. But, to answer your last part of the question, there are other dogs in the region that are available, that we could, you know, utilize from time to time. The reason we would need one here is you could use it for more than just vehicle stops, you could use it for all sorts of other things. But, the expediency of those detections sometimes is a big factor as to whether or not it's a case that could go forward or not. So, on the traffic stop cases, we would probably have that dog deployed with an officer on probably some sort of a swing shift or nighttime shift, which is when we're going to involve a lot of the traffic stops where there are narcotics and things present. So, you know, for us to borrow a dog from, say, Fort Worth or one of the other surrounding cities in the metroplex could take as long as an hour or longer for them to respond.
How many cities have dogs?
You know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I can find that out, too. There's, I know that several of them are trained, I mean, there's, so, there's several that are trained for narcotics detection, there's several that are trained for tracking humans, or, you know, like, say, finding missing people, or for tracking for suspects that have fled. There's also aggression-trained dogs, and building search dogs, and dogs that are trained to bite.
So, is our dog going to be trained to bite and chase people?
No, I don't intend to train that. I intend for our dog to only, to strictly be trained as a drug detection dog, and possibly, they can be cross-trained as drug detection and a tracking dog. But, you know, the, which doesn't mean that they're not capable of biting somebody, but they're not going to be trained for that. I don't think we have a need for that.
I would be very much interested in exactly what training credential you all are using for this dog. You know, are we following the gold standard, which is called the double-blind, where when they're trained, neither the handler nor the dog knows what's there, things like that. That's, I know that there's been a lot of study on that. Like I say, my research in the last 48 hours, and that seems to be the way everyone is going. So, this is information I would absolutely need to get behind. Against it, it's just I don't have enough information.
Sure, and I can get you a couple examples of those protocols and supply that to everybody.
Do you have any idea, are you talking about a lab? I know what the, I've seen lots of narcotic dogs, because I travel a lot, and a lot of them are beagles in the airports that the DEA or them use.
Yeah, we talked about that this morning, as a matter of fact. I mean, the, you know, the standard German shepherd or Belgian Malinois are the most common. There can be labs?
Right.
Or beagles. One of the reasons that I think that they use the German shepherds more than some of the others is that they're, they have been bred longer to be obedient and please their trainers, their handlers, whereas, say, a beagle is a great sniffer, but they tend to be a little more independent.
Oh, absolutely.
So, but that doesn't mean they don't make good detection dogs.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on this same topic while we're here. You know, and I love Sheldon, he's our arson dog that we have here. If I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, that his cost was $30,000, but that was covered in a grant by State Farm?
That's correct.
And it was 30,000?
The initial training for the dog and the handler, yes, it was about a little over 30,000 dollars. That was through a grant from State Farm.
Right. So I was wondering, why is it almost doubled for a drug dog? And the second question I have on this, and I have a couple more, but are there not grants out there for us to apply and get that dog, that particular dog covered, instead of burdening our citizens with that extra expense?
There's not as many grants out there as there have been in previous times. We're exploring a couple of opportunities. There's some, there is, there is one program out there right now that would essentially pay for the animal and the training. But it's a very unique grant opportunity. We just estimated 50,000 as a startup figure for the training, and then a vehicle and all the things that go with that. The dog also, there's a cost also for a kennel facility and all the other equipment that goes along with that dog, that has to be placed at the handler's home. So, we just estimated that cost, and I'm sure there's been, I think that was, what, three years, about three years ago? So, you know, there's some increases in costs from, you know, I don't know that it would be the full 50,000 if we paid for everything by itself, but that was just an estimate.
Okay. Well, like I said, you know, our success with Sheldon has been so high, and State Farm also covered a portion of his vehicle, right?
Yes, ma'am, we got that through a grant through State Farm. They've been very helpful to our city.
They have.
We've been helpful to them as well, but they did provide us, it was a stolen vehicle that they recaptured?
Mm-hmm.
And then we repurposed it for a transport vehicle.
And...
Some of the cost that Chief Howell was mentioning, our dog had went through initial training to be an assistance dog. So some of that cost of that training was probably offset on these particular dogs, because they usually, as the articles you saw, they washed out of an assistance dog. So they had some level of obedience training with the handler prior to being trained as an arson dog. So that may offset some of the cost that we incurred, the 30,000.
And is the drug problem high enough in Saginaw that we need one of, that we need this type of dog immediately? Or would we have time to go look for grants or have fundraisers or something?
There's certainly time to look for grants, because, but, you know, to answer your question, we run across illegal drugs five or six times a week.
Almost daily, then?
Yes. So, I would say, yes, they're, I mean, the dog would get a lot of use.
When you say illegal drugs, are we, I mean, I'm not a drug connoisseur, but are we talking, are we talking pot, which is legal in a lot of states now, or are we actually talking meth and things that's actually causing the country problems?
All of the above.
Do you have a breakdown?
I can get that for you. I didn't bring those statistics with me.
I mean, you know, some 18, 20-year-old with a joint in his car, while I don't condone it, it's to me is a huge difference of me spending $50,000 and $5,000 a year for a dog versus, you know, meth or something like that.
I don't know if you've noticed or seen on Facebook, the Blue Mountain Police, they're doing big drug stops like once a week, where they're pulling ounces and ounces of meth and stuff, and that's like, you know, they have to be coming through Saginaw or somewhere for them, so, I mean, it's these drugs, I mean, and they always putting pictures and everything in Blue Mountain for their stops. But yeah, I know it's probably a need.
Okay, keep going.
Just more one-time expenses. If you have any specific questions, let me know.
I actually do have another one.
Okay.
On the startup cost for the 5K race event, you have $20,000 allocated to that.
Mm-hmm.
And if I remember the discussion correctly, a lot of that is to cover the overtime for the employees for that event. Like Nick, I just got back into town.
Mm-hmm.
I've been gone for over a week. So I actually had time to sit down and study this in great detail. But I also remembered some discussions that we had, that Saginaw is one of the great places for train watching. And if I remember correctly, I think that takes place over Memorial Day weekend. What do they call it, 24-hour?
There's a couple times that they are out there, yeah.
Do that?
Yeah.
I think it'd be kind of cool if we could coordinate that 24-hour with this 5K race, since we already had the run on the rails, which happened to be on a different weekend in the past, but coordinate that all together and make a big city event out of it. I'm not sure what all could happen during that, but I mean, just...
No, that's a great point. Our race director is out of town, Keith, he handles the planning. Some of the costs related to the race or the actual timing equipment and buying the bibs and that sort of thing, but yeah, I think it'd be great. It's a great idea.
I mean, we've lost, we've taken away a lot of things from our citizens, and I think this is one more thing that, you know, we could combine, I mean, how many, I don't know, how many of you guys heard of the 24-hour thing where people come watch trains? Yeah, just a few of you. I mean, I think it'd be a great thing to bring some...
We'd also add just preliminary discussions about maybe, not this year, but next year, having the race as part of Train and Grain, because we know we're hosting a big crowd and, you know, have a fun run 5K, so, yeah, happy to talk about that.
Okay.
Be a lot of fun. Debt service is, as you're aware, the City Council approved the first installment of what voters approved in May, $9 million. We have our certified values, which were a little higher than our initial estimates earlier this year, that's always to the good. The average taxable value of a Saginaw home is 202,642 for tax year 21. Thankfully, our proposed rate was less than what we had originally talked to you about months ago, so the average impact based on the proposed tax rate for this tax year, as you can see, is 868.23, or about $72 and some change a month, so... I'm sorry, property tax. It's to the right, 971.70. That's an increase from last year, and that is, the lion's share of that is due to the issuance of debt the voters approved in May.
So, I, sorry, I want to, again, help our audience here. So this 8.62 a month that we're proposing, that's the increase, but that's only 18% of the tax base.
Yeah, another great point.
There's a slide that shows that later.
Yeah, we've got a slide later, we can show that.
But, just quick math here, that's about a $49 a month increase on your house payment or your taxes each month. So you're looking at almost $50. So, I know we had looked at a different, there are several other tax rates that we looked at, I hope we're going to bring those back up, but I'd like to see if we could consider a lower one. I mean, anything that we can, $50 a month is a lot for many of our citizens.
I don't think it's $50 a month. You go back, Gabe, but it's $8 a month, right?
That's $8 for the Saginaw portion. It's almost $50 for the whole tax thing.
Yeah, so the increase...
If I did my math correctly.
The increase is $103 annually, which is $8.62 a month.
Right. That's just the Saginaw portion.
That's correct, the Saginaw portion, yeah. We...
We don't control the other portions, though.
And that's the graph that the...
I know, but I think the citizens need to know that that's, they're looking at a total tax have increase of almost $50 a month, at 18% for the $8.62. I think it's like 48-something, 49-something. I wrote that down, but I didn't bring my notes in with me.
Sure. Yeah, so... Sure. Yeah, so the, like I say, the Saginaw related portion of the increase is eight sixty-two. And that's, the mayor mentioned that breakdown when homeowners get their property tax bill, it's one big amount. And the city's portion of that is approximately eighteen percent. We broke that down on the dollar graph there. So moving on to the enterprise fund, water and sewer. And again, these increases are pass-through. We purchase water from Fort Worth as a wholesale customer. And then our wastewater goes to Fort Worth to be treated. We, we can't control these rate increases that Fort Worth sets. But we try to minimize the increases to our customers. So approximately a ten percent water rate increase, five percent wastewater increase. Part of the water utility enterprise fund or capital projects related to the system. So generator for Jarvis elevated tank, we're adding one water wastewater technician position. Maintenance Longhorn pump station, and then we have one project for a meter station upgraded that'll be funded by impact fees, which are separate from rate pair funds.
So, so Gabe.
Yep.
It looks like you guys ain't doing a direct pass-through of what Fort Worth is increasing us.
That's correct.
How are you all absorbing that?
Through fund balance.
Through what?
Through the fund balance. So the, the savings there, we're not passing through a hundred percent of the increase. Kim mentioned this in the past, but we try to keep the rates steady and predictable. Some of the swings have been on the wastewater side, so we're trying to smooth the wastewater and, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we wasn't robbing our future.
No, no, we'll still meet our fund balance, policy requirements.
And we're still maintenance, we'll be able to.
Yep, absolutely.
And Gabe, also, you know, once again, looking at how much the taxes are increasing, we've got, even though it's minimal, and I appreciate everything that the city is doing to help this, I mean, we're looking now at about fifty-five dollars a month that people are going to have to pay more. That's, it's just a lot of money.
Yeah, fi- five eighty-nine a month more.
Yeah, almost.
Yeah, combined. Okay, I understand.
I'm rounding it up just to make the number.
Yeah. Certainly understood and a great point, but again, the utility fund is a business enterprise, so we have to adjust our rates to, to make sure we have fund balance.
I know, but our citizens are having to, they're the ones who are tightening the belts. I, I just don't see our cit- our city tightening the belt.
On this one, from my understanding, a big reason Fort Worth is, is because the Water Authority has raised the cost on them. So it's a domino effect.
Right, I understand that.
That's correct, yeah.
I understand that.
What, what drives the rate for Fort Worth, which is our, our wholesale provider, is the cost of water and treatment. And then the capital projects in the, the system to deliver it to customer cities. So, yeah.
Yeah, I guess they buy so much water from the, from the Trinity Water Authority. I, I did ask the other day from someone else who, who sets the price for the Trinity Water Authority, and they've got an answer.
Moving on, we discussed the CCPD fund, which three eighth cent sales tax funds. Got my sticky note. Ten patrol officers, one jailer, one dispatcher, half of a school resource officer. And for FY twenty-two, four replacement vehicles and patrol. We're setting up a police expendable trust fund, which is related to seizures this year. There's some pretty specific limitations on how those funds can be used. Our street maintenance fund, the repairs scheduled for FY twenty-two include spot repairs on Jarvis and then reconstructions with, for Delmar Court, Indian Crest and Saddle Trail.
Gabe, when are we losing the school resource officer?
Uh, so.
When is that? I know it's more than one.
Next school year EMS ISD is planning to have their own officers. So the contract for this school year's school resource officers would be the last. And then we'll absorb those positions, which I'll mention, part of our proposed tax rate is taking that into account because we know we'll have to absorb those positions in the next year. Capital projects, so voters approved in May, over sixty-seven million in projects. We are issued debt for nine million at the lowest interest rate the city's ever received, one point five nine percent, which is always good news. Knowles Phase One, which is the north section from Edwards to Woodcrest, is planned to be the first project, as well as design for the new library and the new senior center. And then our drainage utility fund, the East Cement Creek project is underway. It's, there's utility relocation before we can get to the construction phase of that project. Our donations, voluntary on utility bills, residents contribute a dollar for beautification, library, as well as parks. So that funds library programs, library interns, summer interns for parks, the holiday decorations, and then some of our public art.
So do we have a donation? Are, are, are residents able to donate for the public arts?
Uh, so the, yeah, some of the, some of the money we've used in the past for public art has been from beautification, which, again, completely voluntary, a dollar per category per month.
Gotcha.
General escrow includes Train and Grain, advertising and entertainment, which were about eight weeks away or, or so. It's close, October sixteenth. And then our hotel occupancy tax funds, which are restricted, pay for the farmer's market. And that is the extent of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions and then recommend you hold the public hearing or open the public hearing.
Gabe, I have a couple of questions about the Farmer's Market Administration. I wasn't here for this one, but I noticed that the list of vendors was short. There was what, like fifteen vendors on the list? And I know that I've been to several of the markets throughout the year, and there's a lot of holes. But I hear from Community Link that we got all this long waiting list. How come those vendors aren't being brought in? I mean, do they have any sort of protocol? You know, if you don't show up for two weeks, then, you know, we're gonna, you have to reapply. We're going to bring these people that are waiting in. I mean, how, how is this going to work? Just, I know a lot of people that I've talked to said they, they don't enjoy going to the farmer's market as much anymore because there's not the number of vendors there, and it's always the same people.
Yeah, you know, I think the best, it'd be best to hear directly from Community Link, which you may recall, they're planning a holiday market, a special market this year, which, you know, sounds like it's far in the future, but the holidays are a few months away, so.
Was not aware of that.
Yeah. That was, that was part of the, the contract that the City Council approved. But I, you know, if it's okay with the mayor and council, I, I think we should ask Community Link to kind of give an update, as well as talk about the holiday market plans, because my understanding is they want to, you know, have a big event, a lot of food trucks, that sort of thing.
And the other question I have is, why are we paying them thirty thousand dollars in Lake Worth? Because this is open record information, Lake Worth is only paying them twenty-one thousand dollars.
I don't know the particulars of the, the Lake Worth contract or the, you know, deliverables in Lake Worth, but we have an agreed-upon contract and.
Lake Worth Farmer's Market is about, is about a quarter of the size of ours, maybe, maybe a little more than that, but.
Yeah, well, ours is about half the size as it has been.
That's, that's just not true, Sandy. It, it's been way well attended. There's a lot of vendors there. People love it. We had a record number of food trucks there this week.
Food trucks, yes.
No, it isn't, but I'm saying, in the whole, the whole event is very large and very well attended. I, I, I would disagree with your intel on that. It's, a lot of folks are there. Maybe there's one or two that are missing, but it's, I think there were more than fifteen there. I didn't count, but there was a, a ton of vendors this week.
Well, like I said, I was out of town this weekend. I didn't get a chance. I just saw the list on there, and that list seems to grow shorter. The food trucks are great.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so can we just see if we can get Community Link in here to discuss?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, to ask them to provide an update, talk about the holiday market, that sort of thing.
Any other questions on five? We're still on item five. We're still in a public hearing on the, the budget, twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Questions, comments, council? If not, we are in a public hearing, so anyone from the audience wishes to speak on this item is welcome to do so right now. You don't have to fill out a form. You can just approach the, the lectern. All right, if no other information, no other questions or comments at six forty, I take us out of a public hearing. So this was item number five, so that is no, no action on that one. Item number six, consideration action regarding resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty, adoption of the budget. For that, Gabe and Kim.
Mayor, council, nothing to add other than our plan, as we've, we've told you in the past, would be to look at some public safety positions mid-year. So right now, we haven't been able to get certified officers when we have vacancies. So we're having to put promising candidates through the academy, which is a bit of a lag time. So as soon as we can get caught up, the plan would be mid-year, hopefully, to look at some new positions, as well as make sure, as we, we talked in the past, make sure that our SROs stay with our department once EMS ISD creates their own department. So nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns on resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty? So for this, Bren, is there a certain phrasing we have to use on this one? How does that work?
There's no particular verbiage for the budget, but we will have very specific language for the following item, which is the tax rate.
Okay.
I do have.
Go ahead.
I do have a, a question. Retail Coach, when we first hired them that first year, it was what, thirty thousand dollars? And we renewed them for this year for fifteen thousand dollars? And we're looking at renewing them again for another fifteen thousand dollars. What is our return on investment with that company?
That's a, that's another area that's, we're probably due for a, an update to the City Council. So Retail Coach helps connect the city with brokers who are interested in the things the City Council and residents have said they're interested in, which, you know, I'm preaching the choir here. A higher quality restaurant crowd than what we have currently, as well as entertainment venues. So a lot of Aaron Farmer, and he's presented to the council a few times, a lot of what he does is talk to brokers a lot. So thankfully, we've got some new developments that are in various stages of getting off the ground that'll give us some clean, good, marketable pad sites. I'm happy to bring Aaron back, give, have an update. You may recall the analytics update he did. They, they use the iPhone smartphone data, see where our trade area is coming from. So that's what some of the, the work that they do. Keith has like a standing, maybe it's every other week to talk about Aaron, where brokers are at and various potential sites, that sort of thing.
So with our current forty-five thousand dollar investment, how many new businesses have we brought in?
Don't think I have an answer other than some of these projects take a whole lot of tea time to set up. And we're working on, once we get clean pad sites, to really market them. Like, you know, Belt Mill, for example, we'll be working on the square. We've been waiting on the new street to proceed to construction, which should proceed to construction this fall, so.
Well, I'd like to, you know, do we have any LOIs, letters of intent for our audience? I, I'm just kind of curious. I want to see what, what we're getting in return for the money that we're spending.
Sure.
And if we're not getting anything back, then why are we spending more money? Because I know one of the things he talked about that Saginaw needs because of our location and what we have around us are unique businesses. And he described those as like mom and pop private businesses. And, you know, the one private business that we had, Ice Cream Gallery, is no longer with us, unfortunately. Would love to see them back, but I would like to see more businesses like his here. But I want to make sure that we can get those in, you know, based, based on the information he gave us. I don't want to just say, this is what you need, and then give us, you know, the chain businesses that you can drive five miles down the road and get. I mean, that seems kind of contradictory for them trying to bring things in. So I'd, I'd like to see an update on that before we invest into them again.
Happy to do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get him in here.
Sure. No, that's great.
Other questions, council? If no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on item number six and the budget resolution.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-one, twenty, the budget for the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two.
Have a second? All of the favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, thank you. All right, so that's item six. So we have to move item nine up next. We're doing nine next, as we mentioned, per legal council. So nine is consideration action regarding ratification of the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, dash twenty-two proposed budget. Is that Gabe or Kim or maybe Bren wants to explain what ratification means?
Certainly. So state law requires that a budget that indicates that it will raise more total dollars than the previous year requires that after approval of the budget, a second vote to ratify the budget take place. The vote's no different than the prior vote. It just simply is a second vote confirming that this is what you really wanted.
Is the state trying to ask us, are you sure you wanted to do that?
That's, I didn't want to say that, but yeah, I think so.
Are there any questions on number nine? If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider and ratify.
I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
So even though we did approve the budget, that means those topics are still open for discussion? And we can disapprove them at some point in time? Like we would ask, like he was asking about the canine unit or the canine dog and Retail Coach and things like that. I mean, that doesn't mean we have to spend that money on these things.
The, the budget can always be amended at any point in time during the current, the, the future fiscal year. Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that our audience understands that.
Certainly.
This is what we're doing.
And we always make mid-year adjustments, and so we can adjust anything, anything we want.
Up or down.
Right. Any other questions on number nine, consideration action of ratification? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Does this one have to be specific?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve to ratify the property tax for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Excellent, thank you. That's nine. So now back to number seven. Sorry to jump around on you. Number seven, so at six forty-eight, we're in a public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed twenty, twenty-one property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-one, dash twenty-two. For that, City Manager Gabe Brain and Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Nothing further to add that hasn't been discussed previously.
Questions on the tax rate?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Like I said, I had a lot of time to read while we were traveling. So last meeting, we talked about three different, or four different levels of taxes. And we had the dimint- dim- diminutive tax.
The minimums, yeah.
Diminutive, okay. We have this one that we're proposing. There was one that was lower. It was like four point seven two something. And at that time, you didn't have the information on what the difference was between the, the one that we're looking at today and the other one, but you sent out an email to the council member and said that's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars difference. What I don't recall seeing in that email message is what is the monthly difference to our citizens between those two tax rates?
Thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
Annual.
Annually.
That's the annual. Okay, so we're, yeah, so it's a little over a dollar. Okay.
And, and again, the, as I mentioned earlier, the proposed tax rate, the intent is to come back and would allow capacity to address the SRO situation since. the SRO situation, since we're going to lose our match from the school district, as well as potentially public safety positions mid-year.
Right. We were also looking at some pay increases for our staff, so we could be competitive with other cities.
Right.
Did we ever do any studies, because I know I missed a couple of council meetings because of my mother, with the information that Valerie provided, with what we had, to see how far we're off? Because I know you had talked about Saks, but what was their tax rate, Valerie? Compared to our forty-six?
I think Dolph actually spoke with Belton, I put him on the spot. Do you remember? We called a few cities.
But, I mean, we can't compete with Saks when they have that high of a tax rate. But I just kind of wondered what our overall position was compared with the information that Valerie found, because I thought it was quite interesting that we're not that far off. We're off, but not that far.
Yeah, so what's in the budget is three percent for employees or up to the midpoint. So, that's something we've talked about since January. I don't know what more you might be interested in hearing.
So, trying to change the, the minimum and maximum rates is not something that we're looking at right now?
You mean like the pay grades?
The pay grades.
That what you mean?
Salary study?
Yes.
No, no. It's a three percent adjustment for all employees, or up to the midpoint in their range, which you may recall, a lot of the compression issues, which is where someone who's a new hire to somebody who's tenured, a lot of the compression issues are in the police department. Yep.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, comments on number seven, proposed tax rate? And we are in public hearing, so. Proposed tax rate is point four, seven, nine, five, one, six, I believe, if I'm reading it correctly. And the majority of that increase is what, one points, is it one point five cents over last year, one point six? The majority of that is for the voter-approved bonds.
Correct.
They were approved in May, that we've already released money on. One thing to keep in mind on the bonds we passed, Tarrant County is doing a bond election this fall, in November, a transportation bond election. If that passes, we'll be eligible for matches, essentially free money from the county. We've already submitted five projects, yeah, so we're on the list already. If that passes, I feel quite confident we will get millions of dollars. More than one. I don't know how many. We'll ask for as much as we can get, but we will get several million from the county in free money. So that will help. That will help this taxes in the future, and also just the, all the budget going forward. But we don't know that yet, can't make, can't take that in any of our plans, because it's not done yet. Hopefully it'll pass, but we don't know. So that's one positive coming up in the future. And that is a, from the county, that's a no-tax, no-tax increase bond package. They have bond capacity for like two hundred million dollars, so something to keep in mind as well.
So if we do get the money awarded to us from the county, what does that mean?
That means in the future, we won't have to release as much bond money. Like we said, what was our bond package total, sixty-seven million?
That's correct. So voters approved over sixty-seven million, that doesn't mean we need to issue all that. So if we get a match from the county, which we're confident we will, should voters approve, that's just a lesser amount of debt we would potentially issue.
Does that mean that we can drop the tax rate in the future?
Or, potentially, or not increase it as much for the projects that voters approved. So, it's a savings either way you look at it.
Alright, so any other questions on the tax rate, item number seven? And this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the public wants to speak, please, you're welcome. Yes, sir, come on up.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. It's good to see y'all. I'm Brent Wooton, I live over three hundred, Brinkley Drive. I just have one request for, from y'all. Before you vote, keep in mind that we've been through a pandemic that we're still in the middle of. It's created a huge financial hardship on a lot of people, a lot of people in this community. TAD makes their presence known in our pocketbook every single year. With that being said, I appreciate all y'all's efforts, and my request is, I would expect y'all to be excellent stewards of the taxpayers' money. Your taxpayer, your dollars, my dollars, everybody's dollars. So, that's all I request of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Anybody else? Any other questions, comments, concerns? We are still in a public hearing. Alright, so at six fifty-five, I take us out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion for item number seven.
Mayor. Yeah, so may I add?
Yes, please, Brent.
Two issues. Number one, the motion has to be stated exactly as it appears in the packet. And number two, this will require approval of sixty percent of council, which is at least five members in order to pass.
I'm sorry. This is going to be our fixed tax rate for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it, is it this statement? Can you read?
Is this number, is it number eight?
See, we're on seven, so do we not vote on seven? We vote on eight, right?
Vote on eight.
Okay, sorry, my bad. So, seven's over, we have to vote on seven. Now to item number eight. That's it, that's the one, sorry, I was.
Okay, so when we adopt it, I have to read it just like this?
We do, which is actually listed.
That's correct, yeah, verbatim. It's in the statute, and the only information that we add is the city name and the tax rate and the increase.
No, I have my contacts in, thank you though.
He's talking, he's talking. You gotta, it's in this one.
I know, I'm going to.
Okay.
For consideration, for this one here.
It's number nine in the packet, I know.
Number eight.
It's eight.
No, not, eight is not a public hearing. Yeah. We're in eight, which is considering action regarding ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash seventeen adoption, number nine.
No, not nine, it's number eight.
It's.
I did, I just took us out of a public hearing, it's seven.
Hell.
It's.
Hold on. Do you have questions? Mayor, you have a question for her?
He has, I'm gonna read it from his.
Charles, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
We're on number eight, right?
We're on number eight.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, I'm making a motion. I'm glad that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four, seven, nine, five, one, six, which is effectively a seven point two eight percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay. They were saying?
I'll say, I'll say.
Charles, second. Thank you, sir. All of the favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay. It's item number eight. Alright, sorry for the number confusion. Nine, we've already done. Okay. Ten, consideration action regarding ordinance number twenty, twenty-nine, eighteen, water and wastewater sewer service rates. For that, Gabe Ram.
Mayor, counsel, nothing to add. The rates were in the packet, we covered that with the previous presentation.
We want to mention that there's a committee that deals with Fort Worth tax, Fort Worth wastewater, and we have a representative on that committee, so that's how the rates are come about.
That's correct. All the wholesale water customers meet with Fort Worth. I think that Dolph and Rick, keep in touch with them, related to rates.
Any questions on item number ten, wastewater and sewer rates? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-one dash eighteen, revising the water and wastewater sewer service rates.
Have a second?
I'll say.
Charles, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, guys. Alright, item number eleven.
Hey, new fire station.
Chief, Chief Spears, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. As requested, we're providing counsel a visual update or updated renderings of the new fire station. We have some images that will more accurately reflect what the finished product will be. Early on, we showed you some renderings that were fairly close, but what you'll see now is accurate and matched the building plans. They're not inclusive of every detail or feature, but do provide a good representation of what we'll see when we're finished. There are some bigger prints in the break room back there. If you get a chance to look at those, they're pretty detailed. While we're looking at these, some pertinent dates, the groundbreaking ceremony was on June fifteenth. The contracted completion date is October sixth of twenty, twenty-two. Substantial completion, probably the first week of September. Still Freeman's confident they're going to be finished before the contracted date, hopefully they are. If you'll look at the screens, there's not a lot of narration I have for the photos, but I'll certainly answer questions as we go. As far as the point of view up there, if you're not sure what we're looking from, I can tell you that. This is obviously the corner of McElroy and Amber, and we'll kind of scan through those if you want to stop, or you have a question, just blurt it out loud. The detention pond is obviously on the corner of McElroy and Amber. There was no getting away from that. Ideally, we would like to have the front of the fire station and the citizen entrance right there, but there was no way to accomplish that. So that's pushed around to Amber, but we are making the detention pond very nice looking. If you'll see in the, in the middle of that, I know it's kind of, kind of small up there, but there's a bronze statue out in the middle of the detention pond.
Do we have that yet? Do we have a statue?
So, we're building in the provisions for that, the pedestal, lighting, everything for that. We have enough money in the budget for the bronze statue, but that wasn't included in our initial amount. We're going to come back at its, at a very near meeting and ask for approval for the funding of that. It's estimated to be about fifty thousand dollars. We haven't settled on what that design will be. We will send that to you for input as well. But we are looking at a bronze statue out there, and we'll come back, probably in the next two or three meetings, to allow us enough time to get that built. But there is money in the budget to cover that. We're not asking for additional money. If you'll remember, right now, the fire station is scheduled to come in under budget, so there's some money there to pay for that. We were trying to meet a certain square foot price, so there were some things, we cut off square footage, we did some other things to make sure we met that. But the statue being on the corner there, it needs a prominent feature, so that's what we're after, is adding that statue there.
Is it the detention pond where the water is now? I'm just amazed at all that.
It is. I don't know that that's the exact shape, but the, where the water is right there on the corner, that is the detention pond. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just amazed at how much water is right there.
There's a lot. That whole lot kind of goes to that corner. So we'll continue to go through the photos. There's about twelve of them, actually, so. That's obviously looking straight from McElroy toward the fire station. The fire trucks will exit out onto McElroy when we're leaving for a call, and then we'll enter back the fire station on, off of Amber. That is the main lobby that you will access from Amber. There's a big parking facility there off Amber, but that will be the main entrance to the fire station for citizens. Have some aerial views that are, that, pretty good representation of what that will look like. We will get these posted online as well, so you can see them in a little more detail, although they're a little hard to see on the TV screens. That's the courtyard at the back of the fire station. There'll be an outdoor grill there, outdoor cooking congregation area for the fire station. For our training room, we have an area, if any other city department was using our training room, or we host trainings there, it was important to have a room where people could take a break during an all-day training session, if you will, so that courtyard provides that area where you step out, use the phone, congregate. And there's the construction site. That's a couple of weeks old, but that's what the site looks like from aerial. On the Facebook page, and I think the city website, there is some drone footage that's flying around the site. If you get to look at that, that's pretty neat. They're using some sophisticated technology to track the site. I was hoping to have a photo of what the building outline is on the actual live construction site. We didn't get that done today, but I will send that out to everybody. It's pretty unique. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the chief?
The renderings that are in the break room, I'll make sure that those stay here, so anytime you want to see them, and again, we'll get those posted.
I'm glad to hear that we are on budget and on schedule, so.
We are.
So far.
Things are going like they're supposed to. We're going to make, make sure they stay that way.
I think their construction site is very clean and nice, which I really appreciate.
It is, certainly.
And I also want to compliment Chief Spears. He is driving this, this project as like a project manager as well, so he's wearing two hats right now.
It's a, it's a team, it's a team effort.
I know, but don't sell yourself short. I know the work you've been doing. So, as he's doing the fire chief work and doing the project management work, so we appreciate it, and he's a very detailed guy, so we're fortunate to have him keeping an eye on this. So, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
So is it possible the bronze statue could look like him?
We intend to probably have one of our personnel pose for the picture. I don't know that it'll be specific so you can tell, but that's the idea, to get somebody in the fire station to pose. Maybe we have a little contest or something to pick who that person is. Get some, get some fun out of it.
Well, after you get the new fire station, maybe I should do a calendar with firemen like.
Don't comment.
Any other questions for Chief Spears? Thanks, sir. Appreciate the update. Keep up the good work. Alright, item number twelve, so at seven oh five, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding ordinance, amending ordinance twenty, twenty, twenty oh two dash oh four, zoning regulation of the city of Saginaw for special event venue. I believe this is Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Like most new uses that come before you, we've had some interest in having a special event venue in Saginaw. And so we have to create the use and the definition, so what you see there, recommended is that we have a special event venue permitted by an SGP, a neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and light industrial, along with the definition. The definition includes that, or provides that these facilities may or may not have a professional kitchen. Typically, those are catered, but they could serve on-site. And secondly, that alcohol would be not sold on premises, but that if they do have basically a BYOB sort of scenario, that there'd be staffed, a security officer, one per every one hundred guests. Pretty typical, I think, with most special event venues in the region. So, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer those. If not, we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Questions for Rick? Sidney?
We currently have rates for renting out spaces, gazebos, rooms, the community center. Right now, how are these rates going to differ, since we have the potential for alcohol here? Or is it going to be the same as the?
This, this will be a private enterprise, so whatever rate that they decide that they're going to charge, I mean, they're going to have to be market-driven, just like any business.
So it's not anything controlled by the city?
No.
Okay.
No, it's private.
And so there's no specific item coming that we know of? This is just in preparation of such?
There is a proposal that's being vetted right now and going through due diligence. So, we look for, this particular site would be a mixed-use office during the day, and then on weekends at night, it could be a special event venue, so, a dual purpose.
Yes, this will not be a city facility. This is a private facility, so we just have to have the appropriate zoning and ordinances for it.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Rick? Questions, comments, concerns? Alright, so we are in a public hearing, so anyone from the crowd wishes to speak, now's the time. Got any questions on a special event venue? Let's do it. If not, then at seven oh eight, I'll take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we approve the ordinance, amending the ordinance of twenty oh oh two dash oh four zoning regulations that the city of Saginaw has proposed?
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll say.
Charles, second? Alright. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys. Thank you, Rick. Alright, item number thirteen, so at seven oh eight, we're back into a public hearing. Consideration action regarding a request for development plan and change in zoning to the acres on the multifamily site, et cetera, et cetera, West McElroy Boulevard. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Work.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Again, this item has had quite the history in the last couple of months. I will say that staff and the developer have been working since February of this year to come to this point. It started on May eleventh, when the Planning and Zoning Commission considered a previous planned development proposal from the, from the Lauren Boswell Jr. Enterprises, and essentially a single-family-for-rent product. There was quite a crowd at that first P&amp;Z meeting, and I've noted some of the major concerns in the bullet form and the, and the council memo about increased traffic, that's through traffic from a decader, decreased property tax, increased crime, invasion of privacy, or loss of privacy, how the infrastructure cost can be funded, how it's going to impact schools, how it's going to impact public facilities, infrastructure. how it's gonna impact schools, how it's gonna impact public uh facilities, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So uh, as a result of that, the uh, the staff recommended that we continue that and that the developer uh convene a, a dialogue with the Park West community uh just to the south of their development to see if they could reach some uh agreement or compromise, a list of issues, and see if they could have resolution on uh how they might satisfy uh some of the citizens' concerns. Uh, I will say that some, just some factual things that, that I'd like to bring to your attention uh that are mentioned in the, in the uh, in the memo. We did, excuse me. In, in response to the traffic concerns, we had uh our city engineer provide a memo to us that was included in your packet to uh, to compare the existing multifamily-one zoning and neighborhood commercial uh zoning to what is being proposed. Uh, just to, just to look at, just the, the takeaway from that memo is that uh, the traffic generated by the proposed zoning and pro- proposed development is twenty-two, twenty-seven percent of what the traffic generation would be uh if it were to develop under its current zoning, which is the MF-one and neighborhood commercial. Uh, so those are based on I T E, uh, which is Institute of Traffic Engineering, uh, data and projections. So again, not a traffic study, not talking about what the capacity is on McElroy, anything that, just simply what is the traffic generated from that sort of development uh proposed versus existing? So quite a dramatic decrease in traffic. Another concern that was raised uh that we'd like to address factually is that uh, that there was a, a memo uh again from the Eagle Mountain Saginaw School District. Uh, there were concerns expressed about the impact on Willow Creek Elementary across the street and the school district population in general. Uh, Gabe, Mr. Rem received a memo from uh Clete Welch, who's the operation, chief operations officer with the school district. Just some facts that he conveyed, takeaways from his memo are that the current enrollment for Willow Creek Elementary is, is five hundred and eighty-five. Now, this was uh at the end of the school district, school year last year, so. But the school, but the school has a capacity of seven hundred and twenty-seven uh pupils, so uh, they stated that the existing MF-one zoning is uh within the growth projection for future schools. Uh, we can see by the uh, by the decreased population uh in the proposed development versus existing zoning, uh, that that population has gone down with the proposal. So uh, there would be less impact in terms of population on that school as a result, uh, if this zoning were approved tonight. Um, and the other thing is, and which has been expressed by the neighborhood also in point is that, you know, the school district would like to have a balance between commercial and uh, and uh the single family. So, you know, with, with the proposed zoning, uh, the neighborhood commercial zoning would go away. However, I think uh the developer could, can refute or, or provide facts on the added lower value of this development versus uh sales tax, et cetera, uh, under the existing zoning.
So, so Rick, um, a couple of citizens has, has definitely reached out, and don't reach out to me, I'm assuming to all of us, on specifically traffic. And what they're worried about is uh the increased traffic at the time when schools letting out or coming. And I, I do know personally that in other areas, like over on the other side uh where Fort Worth is, they built a charter school, and it's a bloody mess during, when the kids come and when they let out. They have to block off one of, half the street. They have to have police out there letting them in and out. So um, with, with this being added, with the school already there, during those times when, you know, kids are coming to school and when kids are being let out, how's that going to affect? Do we need a light there or roundabout? I mean.
And I think uh the city manager, I believe, responded to your question. I, I will say that traffic signals go, have to go through a warrant process. There's a, there's a.
Yeah, and that's why I was wanting to ask, because I'm not, and he did mention that, and I didn't quite understand.
It is, and, and a warrant has five or six uh different elements that, 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 that are evaluated by engineers and, and, you know, and, and one of those is the judgment of the traffic engineer that, that's performing the warrant. So, but, but uh, y- you know, you have to look at accidents that occur uh at that location and the volume of the vein roadway and the volume and turning movements of the, of the intersecting roadway. Uh, you know, with, with the design of McElroy that will go under design and, and into construction, I think, three years from now approximately, uh, you know, that will, that can be looked at. Uh, I, I think that when McElroy turns into a four-lane, a, a, you know, two-lane divided or four-lane divided roadway, uh, then that will become less of, of an impact. But again, the takeaway is that, that today with the MF-one zoning and the neighborhood commercial zoning, uh, they can get a building permit today without having to go through any kind of uh warrant study or have to put, to install a light, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So a twenty-seven, uh, you know, uh, that dramatic of a decrease in projected traffic is something to consider also.
Yeah.
And I will say also that I, I think that the uh, uh, as I saw, and I think Mr. Felgey's here tonight, that he, he asked, uh, you know, whether or not that would be an expense that would be borne by the developer. And there is provision in state law. We've used it in s- in participation on street reconstruction. That's rough proportionality. Uh, we can't uh make the developer pay for any more than his proportional share uh of the impact that's caused by his development. So, you know, if he has uh ten percent of the volume of traffic that's being used on that roadway in, in terms of using that capacity, then we can only charge him for, for ten percent of the cost of, of that facility, roadway, signal, et cetera, et cetera, whatever that public infrastructure is. Uh, so I just wanted to make that point also.
All right, before we get too much into this, I want to make sure we hear from the developer and the landowner before we get any more. Anything else from, from your end, Rick?
Uh, I, no, I'll just leave it there, and then if you have any further questions, I'll, I'll of course be here to answer those. But yeah, the developer's here tonight.
Developer or landowner? Which one are y'all? Please. Enter and sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Silo. I'm with the J B I Partners, twenty-one twenty-one Midway Road in Carrollton, Texas. Uh, we do represent the applicant on this request this evening. Obviously, appreciate everybody's time tonight. You went through a lot of stuff with the budget. Uh, appreciate you still hanging around for us. Uh, as Rick indicated, we, was, i- this has been, is this, do we, excuse me, is this, is this the P and Z presentation? The one from the commission meeting? This is the, no, this is the original one. While that's going on, if I could address a couple of points that were discussed by the council and uh Mr. Trice regarding the traffic issues. Real simple explanation about warrants. Generally speaking, the city from a, for lack of a better, from a lack of a lawsuit perspective, this, you, you cannot put things in the roadways that people don't expect because of what's going on. So if you have a roadway that doesn't have a lot of traffic and you put a stop sign there, if it doesn't meet the warrants of why a stop sign would be there, you open yourself up for a lawsuit. So the same thing with a signal or a, a, any type of those traffic issues. Uh, when they're talking about meeting warrants, it is the warrant of the justification of why that thing is needed.
Now, is a warrant, is that controlled by the state?
The process is actually outlined in the um Texas Municipal Code on Traffic by M U C T D.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yes, so there is. Yeah, it's dictated by the state. So as an example, literally, one of the items that they look at for signalization is have there any, has there been any deaths? So although, and because if, if you, if you put something where it doesn't belong, you, you open yourself up to create a problem that wouldn't have existed otherwise. And that's just the process that it goes through. Uh, with regards. Okay, well, we're gonna have to wing it. That's okay.
Jerry, you want me to go?
No. If, no, if they can't find it, that's okay. Okay, this will work. Okay. Rick indicated we had a, we've, we've been working with the city. We've been working with our neighbors since about January, February of this year. Uh, we've had a number of uh neighborhood meetings with our neighbors, two of them, one in May and one in June. Uh, this information is, is, was provided in your packet. There were a list of eight items that the neighbors were really focused on when we uh met with them. Uh, those eight items primarily focused on three things. One were the, how close the homes were to the Park West neighborhood on the south side and other things such as parking lots, the swimming pool, things of that nature. Uh, the second major item was the extension of Westwood Drive through our s- property to tie into the existing Westwood Drive, once again, in the Park West neighborhood. There was a concern if Westwood was extended through our property, uh, that that would create a lot of cut-through traffic for our neighbors. Uh, they had nothing to do with us. People taking their children to school, people bypassing the intersection uh just to the east of us uh during, during the evening rush hours. Uh, and the third item that was discussed had to do with our neighbors' concern uh that the quality of the homes in the neighborhood would not be equivalent to other homes uh in Saginaw. And that primarily dealt with our original proposal. Uh, we were not re, we were not uh proposing any brick on the homes. Uh, since that time, we have proposed to increase that. And in fact, uh, in uh, on July twentieth of this year, last month, uh, the city council entered into a development agreement with the uh, with the applicant with regards to uh locking down that masonry requirement to seventy-five percent of the homes. Uh, of the face of the homes has to be brick. In addition to those, those items, the site plan that you're seeing up on the screen right now, that site plan is an exhibit to the development agreement. So that means that, that site plan, we were, we are proposing a hundred and sixty-six detached homes. That's on the entire twenty acres. As a reference point, the west side of the property, the, basically west of Westwood extension, the west side of the property is zoned for multifamily-one today, which is, which allows for eighteen homes per acre. So on the west side of the property today, two hundred and seven homes could be built. For our total property, including west and east, we're only proposing a hundred and sixty-six homes. And that's how we get a decrease in traffic versus what's out there today. Uh, that's how we get a, a lot of those savings is because we, our overall site is less than what just the west half allows for. So we are proposing a hundred and sixty-six homes. We're proposing them in what we call a clustered concept, where as you can see, we have some main streets running through the neighborhood. All of the streets will be private. No maintenance responsibility to the city. They're all privately owned and privately maintained. Uh, and then within, off of those individual streets, we have auto courts, and those are basically cul-de-sacs. I mean, they're, they're, they're dead-end, uh, they meet all the fire codes. We've had the fire department vet our concept. Uh, the fire department is agreeable with how we've designed it, that where the fire lanes are gonna be. And so you, we, our neighborhood is basically a series of cul-de-sacs off of the spine streets. Uh, and cul-de-sacs in a rental community are viewed the same way as cul-de-sacs in an owner community, where they're viewed as a positive, as viewed, people like to live on the cul-de-sac versus living on the long streets. And so the, the, this design is geared towards creating that type of uh positive impact with, within the neighborhood itself. Uh, all of the homes are gonna be three or four-bedroom homes, two-story homes. Approximately, we are having on the twenty acres, eight homes per acre. Eight would be a hundred and sixty, so we have a hundred and sixty-six, so it's eight and change uh versus the eighteen per acre, which is what the west side of that zoning allows for today. Uh, the entire property will be platted as one lot. Uh, the individual homes will be owned and maintained by one entity. Uh, if there are issues over time with regards to apartment, and these are technically, you know, similar to apartments, rental homes, uh, through the city's rental home program and inspection program, the city has one contact of information to that property. Not a hundred and sixty-six individual homeowners that they have to track down, not an H O A. These, since these homes are all on one lot, they cannot be sold off individually. Uh, it is, it is a package deal. A hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-six homes either bought or sold together or not at all. Uh, so the, the fear of these being sold off at some time in the future, uh, we, we do not feel that is, that is, that is valid for that point. With regards to additional things that we don't have on this plan, that we, we had on the exhibit from the Planning and Zoning Commission, are items that our neighbors asked us to look at during the second meeting and also during the council meeting that we had. And those items are that along our south property line and along our west property line, uh, we're gonna have a six-foot wooden fence adjacent to those, to that property. Along our north property line and our east property line, which would be adjacent to the roads, are, we're gonna have a minimum eight-foot-high brick fence. We are also uh providing for uh four-inch caliper trees, one tree for each lot. Basically, where homes are adjacent to our neighbors in Park West. So that, that, that'll, that'll ballpark at the, at the time of planting, give you about a twelve-to-fifteen-foot-high tree. Uh, and then within about ten years, it's gonna be twenty-five to thirty feet high. So, so to provide that screening that our, our neighbors were concerned about, uh, the city typically requires a three-inch caliper tree. We've bumped ours up to four inches. Um, so uh, w- we believe that we are above and beyond what the city is asking for or what the city typically would require, which is what our neighbors asked for. We have also, in terms of the, hopefully we have them on here. If not, I know you have them in your packet. We also have with regards to the elevate, the building elevations. As I said, when we originally proposed them, uh, they were not masonry, they were not brick. Uh, our, our client has gone back to their architect, and we will have four different buildings within the neighborhood. Plans one, two, three, and four, different floor plans, different number of bedrooms, things of that nature. And what we are providing in the, in this presentation and what you have in your packet are the elevations for, we have one elevation drawn up for each individual plan right now. So these would, this would be like what plans one and two would look like, uh, which are all brick, um, brick or stone, same thing. And these are plans three and four. The, the plan four is that plan that you would see all along the white streets. Those, those streets that are colored white, the, the east-west streets. We, the way, the way that, the way the auto court works out, plan fours are all along the edge of those, uh, along the, the edge of those spine streets. Uh, so that elevation in the lower left-hand corner and very little variations of that, that's what you'd see as you're driving down those streets. And then as you, as you're driving down the auto courts, as you're driving down the cul-de-sacs, you would see plans three, two, and one. Uh, so we feel all very attractive. We feel very comparable to any, any home that's, that's been built uh in Saginaw. Uh, so we, we don't believe that the homes in our neighborhood will be of a lesser quality than what is built anyplace else in the community.
Mayor, if I could interrupt, I, I have copies of his, of his presentation that was supposed to be given tonight, but somehow got deleted from the computer. But just for your information.
And, and basically, what we are trying to create is a neighborhood for people who don't, for whatever reason, don't want to, don't have the ability to, are at a different stage of their life, but they do not want to have, they do not want to own a home that has a thirty-year note associated with it. There, believe it or not, there are people that don't think owning something for thirty years and paying a mortgage on it is a positive thing. Uh, there are also people that uh have lived in a home. Uh, they don't want to live in the home anymore and all the responsibilities that are associated with that, but they still want to live in a de, in a detached home. They don't want common walls. They don't want to share a wall with a neighbor. They don't want somebody living above it and having their ceiling be somebody else's floor. Uh, they like the attached garage, which we have, all of our homes have a two-car attached garage. All of our homes will have a driveway in front of those garages that will be eighteen to twenty-foot deep, so that will, they will also be able to park two additional cars on those driveways. Those are all outside the fire lanes. They're all outside the, the, the general moving of traffic. Uh, and each home will have in a fenced-in backyard. All of those benefits that most people feel that they get by living in their own home, uh, our client is providing for the people that will be renting these homes. Average lease for these homes is typically about uh eighteen months, somewhere between eighteen and twenty-four months. Uh, a- as Rick indicated, when we had these discussions with regards to the property values, the school district has expressed a concern. That neighborhood that you see right there is anticipated to cost four hun- I'm sorry, forty million dollars to build. That neighborhood that you see right there is anticipated to cost four hun, I'm sorry, forty million dollars to build. And it makes sense when you consider ballpark, a hundred and sixty-six homes, at three hundred thousand dollars a home to build, is gonna be right, is in that, that forty million dollar range, cause, just because it's a rental home, it's not any different than it costs to build a two-thousand-square-foot home anywhere else. And with the brick and with the, with the streets and everything else associated with that, the, the amenity center, uh, that is gonna be the approximate cost of what it's gonna take to build those homes.
And what is the rentals?
Rents are... Two thousand or twenty-five hundred typically, the bigger ones are gonna be closer to the twenty-five hundred. So it, as, as I mentioned, this is a lifestyle, this is not somebody that's just coming in and says, okay, I wanna live in this thing for six months and go about my life. If you're investing two thousand dollars every month in rent, you are investing it for a reason. And so we, we, and, and those home renters, um, typically want to stay there a longer time. Because they do get, they, they do feel those benefits of those, those items I talked about, uh, in the presentation. Uh, with regards to the, the, the traffic, once again, finishing up on that, you know, a, another way to look at this, when you compare, when Kimmy Horn did their analysis of two hundred and seven, the ability to have two hundred and seven homes on the west side of the property and approximately ninety thousand square feet on the east side of the property, which is what it, which is what it specs out for. That traffic that would be generated from those uses on a daily basis is two hundred and sixty-eight percent more than what our neighborhood will generate, and those are using Kimmy Horn's numbers, it's using the city's engineers' numbers. So a two hundred and sixty-eight percent increase if it's built as its zone versus what we're proposing. AM peak, that morning, that morning traffic, it's a hundred and eight percent more existing versus what we are proposing. PM peak, it's three hundred and sixty-two percent more existing versus what we are proposing. So while there, while there is always gonna be traffic on McLaRoe, there's a school there, there's the activity, there's, there's the through traffic, uh, to get you east and west. If the property develops as we are asking for, from a traffic standpoint, it will be a significantly lesser impact than what the existing zoning would allow for today. And on that note, I will finish my presentation and be more than happy to answer questions that the council has.
Any questions for the developer, council? Mr. Tucker? Go ahead. Yes, sir.
What kind of trees are you planning on planting? You said they were gonna be four-inch trees.
The, the city has a listing of trees that are allowed for canopy trees, that are allowed for accent trees. Uh, we have not specifically developed the landscape plans for the project, but they will be trees that, they will be, they're canopy trees per the city's ordinances.
Okay. On the diagram you have up there now, if you come off of McLaRoe into the, into the subdivision.
Yes, sir.
To the first main street going east-west.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be open down there on the east end of that street?
Yes, sir, that, 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 that opens up to, I, I don't remember the name of the street. Woodcrest, yes, yes, that is, that is.
Well, down onto Woodcrest, yeah.
Yeah, that, that does open up to there, yes, so there's two points of access to the neighborhood.
So basically, they've got two ways in and out.
Yes, sir. And, and we have, and I, I, I didn't mention it, but we have specifically, uh, not extended Westwood to the north. Per our neighbors' request.
What about parking? Now, you, I'm assuming by the diagrams that we just saw that they're gonna have, each individual house is gonna have its own garage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about parking in the streets?
There will be, um...
What I'm getting at before, you know, just to give you an idea of why.
Yes, sir.
Is if we have to get a fire truck down in there.
Yes, sir.
And I know Chief Spears has already said, okay, yeah, this is good. But if you got people parking on the street, they'll never get the fire trucks down in there. And then they have to back out.
Correct. Yes, what, the, what, then here you go, the, these, these detailed plans, which are in your packet, these are specific plans that have been approved by the fire department, so every auto court is, will be a striped fire lane, which will prohibit parking within the fire lane. So to, to address parking for the individual homes, as we talked, we will, each, each home will have a two-car garage. Uh, and then each home will have, as you can see on the drawing, the triangles are representations of cars. So each home will have a driveway in front of the garage, eighteen to twenty feet deep to allow for two cars to be parked. No parking will be allowed on the auto courts. So all the cul-de-sacs, there will be no parking allowed, they will be striped as fire lanes, they will be built as fire lanes, uh, and parking will be prohibited. Once again, since it is only one entity that owns this, if the fire department's going to drive out there, the police department's driving out there and they notice people are parking out there, they go to the management, management says, get them out, cause they, they all have to sign leases. All of that is, all of that is outlined in a lease, just like in any other rental community. Uh, with regards to the east-west streets, we will have parking on one side of that street. Parking will be allowed, it, it's actually thirty-one feet of paving, so we have a twenty-four-foot-wide fire lane, once again, it will be striped. No parking will be allowed within that fire lane, and then we'll have the eight-foot on the side of that fire lane to allow for parking on one side of the street. So we, we, we've, we know we have ample parking for the residents, we know we have ample parking for visitors, and we know if everybody follows the rules, just like every other home in the city, if everybody follows the rules, if everybody follows the rules like they do in any other rental community, uh, then we won't, we should not have a problem with cars obstructing emergency vehicles in the neighborhood.
Well, I'm just concerned seriously about, if you got a fire truck and any, uh, MedStar off down in there, are they gonna be able to maneuver?
We believe so, yes, sir, and I believe the fire, I believe Chief Spears would not have signed off on the plan if he thought that they couldn't.
You say you're gonna be able to pass, um, a fire truck is gonna be able to have a EMS ID, I mean EMS ID, MedStar go down right beside them?
Twenty-six-foot wide fire lane will allow passing of two fire trucks and allows firefighting activity if we.
Yeah, cause everything comes off the sides of the fire truck.
Correct.
So, you know, we're gonna be dealing with that, and...
In the motor courts, typically a fire lane is twenty-four feet wide, these are twenty-six feet wide.
Which is the city standard.
In our cul-de-sacs, our neighborhoods have cul-de-sacs now, are they basically the same size as these cul-de-sacs are existing, they're small?
Well, the motor courts, a cul-de-sac has a turnaround at the end of it, a hundred-foot diameter circle, obviously the motor courts don't, don't have that. So anything that's in excess of a hundred and fifty feet, you have to provide turnaround provisions. So these, uh, particular ones don't exceed a hundred and fifty feet, if it's short of a hundred and fifty feet, we would just back, back down the street.
And you all have no problem backing back out?
It's not preferable, but that, that meets the code and, one thing you gotta think about, these homes are sprinklered, so the occurrence of a fire event, a significant fire events is very, very slim, so.
And, and councilman, to specifically answer your question in terms of the, the driving width of a street, street's thirty-one foot wide.
I'm sorry?
A street is thirty-one feet wide.
Yeah.
If I, and, and in Saginaw, as, as you can, in, in basically every city in the metroplex, you can park on both sides of that street.
Right.
Parking space basically is eight foot wide for a parallel space. So I have thirty-one minus two eights, is I have thirty-one minus sixteen. So I have a fifteen-foot-wide travel lane on every street if people are parking on the street. As the chief indicated, and as I've, I've mentioned, we have twenty-six foot clear on every one of these auto courts. And we, and we have twenty, and we have twenty-six foot clear on all of the east-west streets. Because we have thirty-one and we only have eight foot of one side parallel parking.
You have an awful lot of, of faith in human nature not park on the streets.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You've got a lot more than I do.
And, and the, the analogy I use, and people come up, ask me this question all the time, the analogy I use is, I would hazard a guess, ninety-five percent people, ninety-five percent of the people in this room, if not greater, if you were on the road at four o'clock in the morning, and you're the only one on that road, and you come to a red light, you will stop until it turns green.
I've seen plenty of people that don't.
Because that is, we are raised a certain way, we are raised, the red lines, the red, the, the fire stripe lines are no different than any other fire stripe line on any retail center in the metroplex, including Saginaw, on any rental community in the metroplex, on any rental community in Saginaw. There is nothing different, and if, and my, my point is, is that if there are not problems in those areas, then what would, why would this neighborhood be viewed as being problematic if we're not running into those problems everywhere else?
So Doug, I mean, really, I, I look at you, you're, you're the expert here, okay? And so, uh, does these roads, whatever you call them, do they give you any concerns, considering we have, uh, sprinklers in there?
No, sir.
I have a question.
Well, I've got a sixteen-foot trailer, I don't prefer to back it out, but I can't.
Cindy, Cindy had a question?
Uh, Valerie asked a question first.
The longest one's about forty-two feet.
How much?
Forty-two.
Forty-two feet?
I mean, recently, your, um, crew responded to two events in one week in my cul-de-sac. Uh, very skilled, but they pulled in the first time for a very serious medical case, and I watched them do like a twenty-point turn in that cul-de-sac and to get out. Two days later, they responded to an emergency and they stopped at the end of the street and the crew walked in to address that. Fortunately, it wasn't serious, but it could have been. Um, so, but the cul-de-sac was there before you bought the forty-two-foot truck.
Trucks have gotten larger over the years, yes.
Trucks have gotten larger over the years. Now we're looking at, and this is from my perspective because I saw what happened to my neighbors. I'm looking at the drawing that you have presented here. For lack of better terms, I'm gonna call them north street and south street. Just to make it easy, cause I have a pea brain, I'm not very smart.
I'm with you, ma'am, I'm, we're, we're, we're buddies on that one, I'm, I'm, I'm there too.
Okay, so on the west side of Woodcrest, Westwood, excuse me, on the west side of Westwood, I'm left and right challenged, so I have to use north, south, east, west. If I'm looking on the very end where the cul-de-sac is.
Yes, ma'am.
On north street, or even south street, but more so on north. I drive all the way to the end and I head north and I, basically, I'm just gonna run into a house if I don't turn. There is no cul-de-sac, there is no defined sharp turn or smooth curve that I could see. And then you go down three houses and you make another right turn.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Spears, not so much on the north side of North Street, but more so on the south side of North Street. How are you gonna be able to access those houses with those sharp curves, especially those three at the very bottom?
If I may, every one of the, every one of the curves, every, every radius is a minimum thirty feet radius, which is what the fire code requires.
Your forty-two-foot truck will be able to maneuver that?
That's correct.
If everybody plays by the rules like he's talking about.
Right.
Everybody plays by the rules.
Every turn on there, we're able to make in the forty-two-foot fire truck.
Uh, trash cans are sitting on the curb on Sunday night.
That could be a common occurrence anywhere in the city.
You're gonna knock those over, um...
These, these, these will...
Mailboxes.
These are, these, since it is a rental community, there will be common trash containers, uh, throughout the community.
What does that mean?
Commercial, commercial trash containers, there's not individual trash containers for each house.
So you're gonna have dumpsters, you're gonna have dumpsters, is what you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So we are gonna have...
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, mailboxes?
There, there's, there's a common mailbox at the amenity center.
Okay, um, you got these trees and things, I just, I just don't see how you easily get in there and access that house in the middle. It's just, like I said, I'm not very smart, but, you know, when I saw your email that came out.
For every other resident or business in town, they don't meet the same standard.
And I know you guys are gonna do the best that you can do, I have no doubt about that, I trust you implicitly on that. What concerns me is that your email came out and said it met the minimum standards. I'm not happy with minimum. I want you guys to be protected as much as possible.
I would make that statement for any development project, building, that would be my same statement.
Well, I know, but that concerns me when I hear minimum, it's like, no, you, you, you guys put your life on the line any more than anyone else.
If we're gonna be, if we're gonna be fair in any development, we're only gonna hold them to the minimum standard, that's what every, usually every developer's gonna do is meet the minimum standard.
But none of us would be willing to put our lives on the line like you two gentlemen do. And I cannot sleep at night knowing that I'm settling for minimum standards.
And, and if, if I may, with regards to minimum standards, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but over the years, fire lanes were twenty feet wide, then they got bumped up to twenty-four feet wide, now they're twenty-six feet wide. Uh, the, the, the turning radius used to be twenty-foot, uh, and then they used to be twenty-four, twenty-five, depending on what city you were in. Now in Saginaw and in most communities, they are thirty feet, so because of equipment changes, those minimum standards have been progressively increasing, and that's why there are international fire codes, that's why the city adopts those. Those are the standards that are established in those international codes. So it, it, we, we are not dealing with standards that were created back in the nineteen seventies. So as, as technology has changed, so have the standards. With regards to, if I may, with regards to, uh, the concern that you saw on your cul-de-sac, is with both of ours, both of those east-west streets, the north and the south one, we have a cul-de-sac at the west end of the street that meets the city's requirement for a cul-de-sac. Even though it's a private street, it's, it's built to, it will be built to the city standard for a cul-de-sac. And as you see on that concept plan, the, the last set of auto courts on the north side of both of those cul-de-sacs is a loop. So a fire truck does not have to do a twenty-point back out, he will be driving on a fire lane and doing a loop and be able to just go straight around that loop and go back out the neighborhood.
So Bubba has a mowing business. And he's got this big ol', what is it, you're gonna have to help me cause I'm ignorant when it comes to trucks, Ford three fifty, those big one?
Sure.
Big monster trucks?
Commonly used, yes, ma'am.
And he's got a sixteen-foot, eighteen-foot trailer that puts all of his mowing equipment in it, and he parks in his driveway. And he happens to be right over here on the corner where Chief Spears and his heroes have to turn that corner. Are they gonna be able to execute that corner with Bubba's truck?
I believe so, because this is not, this, this is not an individual homeowner. This is a, this is a rental community, and while I do not have the lease in front of me, I do not have the allowable, uh, vehicles that are allowed in this neighborhood in front of me, I do not believe with the quality that this neighborhood will be built with, that they will allow a duly pickup truck hauling a sixteen-foot trailer with lawn equipment on it as a regular ability to park within this neighborhood.
I know those guys make a lot of money. They could easily afford to live into that neighborhood, and so you're telling them you're gonna eliminate them from the neighborhood because they have company business, they're gonna have to go park someplace else?
Then, then the, the owner of the neighborhood has the ability to control who lives in the neighborhood and who doesn't, per, for the, the lease agreements. If those, if those vehicles are, those types of vehicles are specifically excluded from the lease agreements, then they can't sign the lease.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Gabe.
Just wanna make, and we can sort of speculate on things all night, and as everyone's well aware, this has become a very emotional issue. Each individual single-family home in this proposed development will have fire sprinkler protection. The chief and I have talked, I believe these would be the safest single-family homes in the city of Saginaw, Texas. I'm not aware of any single-family homes that have fire sprinkling, is that a fair statement, chief?
That's correct.
So I know we can get into these scenarios, I certainly understand that, but let's stick to the facts and what has been presented, uh, in an objective manner. They have met, uh, fire review standards, and again, each of these units are individually sprinkled, making them, uh, for fire protection purposes safer than my own home in Basswood Crossing built in July twenty eighteen.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, as you know, I've been dealing with, uh, some family matters, and I have not been able to make most of these meetings with these... Well, I understand that, but you know, as you know, I've been dealing with, uh, some family matters and I have not been able to make most of these meetings with these gentlemen. I have some questions of my own that I'd like answered, because the information that we get is, is not comprehensive.
Sure.
It is minimal. There you go. Thank you.
I, I got a, I got a simple question, though.
I just.
I'm sorry, Cindy. Go ahead, keep going.
You know, I have to do what is right for our citizens, you know, and while I appreciate your entrepreneurship, I just, I don't know. I look at the freeze that we had, just about every municipal building that we had this year that had fire suppression systems, guess what? They dealt with major flooding issues. Why? Because those pipes are up in the ceiling where they need to be for fire suppression and they froze. You know, that's a big issue for me. Now, that's a huge burden on our fire department, as well as anything else. We're talking a hundred and sixty-six more new things that they need to respond to. I, I just, I, I don't know if you're aware, but we have spent a considerable amount of money talking to the citizens with citizen summits. We had, um, our community forums with our city engineers. We've used the retail coach. You heard us talk about them earlier. We have asked the citizens over and over and over and over and over and over, and we've spent a lot of money doing it to find out what they want in this city. And no offense to you and your entrepreneurship, but they, this is not exactly what they want. Whether it's this, uh, development that you have or the apartment complexes.
Alright, thank you, Cindy. So I, back to the fire question. Getting in and out of this, um, development, is this gonna be any different than getting out of an apartment complex? Any harder than getting in and out of an apartment complex for a fire truck?
There could be scenarios where we would back out of the street more frequently, 'cause there's many more opportunities to do that. But one thing I wanna point out, any major fire event we have in the city, about half the fire trucks that show up, they're backing out to get out because we have hoses and everything everywhere else. So even though we're on a regular public street with two ways in and out, we have a fire event, most of those trucks that showed up, they're backing back down the street. In many cases, it could be three or four hundred feet to get out of there. That's just something we're accustomed to.
So you're in a hurry to get there, but you're not in a big hurry to leave, so.
That's correct. And, and one of the, one of the things that, that Cindy pointed out, if we park at the edge of the street, we're gonna always leave room for the ambulance to get there and maneuver and turn around and leave very quickly. So that's why you see a fire truck, most of the times parked two or three houses down, maybe even at the corner of the street, 'cause the ambulance is the most important vehicle at that point to get the patient transported to the hospital.
Good point.
So we, every time we pull up, we're thinking about those things.
Great. Mr. Tucker, you got a question?
I had one more. You were mentioning fire sprinklers and I, I really think that's a, an excellent idea for especially like a complex like this. Do these houses, and I'm gonna call them houses, 'cause that's basically what they are.
Yes, sir.
Do they have attics in them? So there is an attic space where people, like around here, we store stuff. We don't have basements, so we stick stuff in the attics, okay?
Yes, sir.
Are the fire, uh, suppression systems or the sprinklers gonna cover that? If one of those things was to catch fire, is it gonna spray in the attic to shut it off?
Uh, my understa-, I'm, I'm not a fire guy. My, yeah, my understanding is, is they will be in, they will be in the living areas. So not in the attic.
Okay.
I think what Charlie, I think what Charlie is asking is, you know, a lot of times, you know, the attics get hot and I think he's worried about things combusting in the attic. And are you gonna be able to respond to that with your sprinkler system rather than just the living area? Or will it have to hit the living area before those, uh, sprinklers are triggered?
Our, our sprinklers meet the code that is required and the code does not require the sprinklers in the attic. We are not providing the sprinklers in the attic. Uh, if something combusts in the attic, uh, if it, if it burns large enough that it goes down into the living area of the home, the sprinkler system will kick in.
Then we need to remember the intent of the sprinkler system is to provide the occupants a safe way out in the event of a fire. That's their, that's their only, only function.
It's not there to save the house.
That's correct.
So it could burn.
No, actually, it's, it's there to give them enough time to get out. The smoke sprinkler system, you put a big tank of water, once the tank empties, it's done. But these, I'm assuming, are going to be hooked into water.
It's tied into the city's water system. No, it's all, no, it's, it's all pressurized. It's all pressurized water. It's tied into the city system.
Alright, any other questions for this gentleman? I wanna let him go. He's been up here a while.
Yeah, I, I, I got.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you, Doug.
So you, you said that the leases are eighteen to twenty-four months. Do y'all have any data on how long somebody, you, you predict somebody will actually stay in these? What's their rollover rate?
No, that, that is what the rollover rate is.
Oh, that's a rollover rate, okay.
So the, the leases are twelve months minimum?
Twelve months, okay. My bad. Okay. So the next question I got is, uh, one of the big concerns that I heard from a lot of the citizens and stuff was skinning the game. If you buy a house, you own a house, you've got, you know, most of us, that's the biggest investment we'll ever make.
You're correct.
So we got huge skin in the game, so to say. We've become part of Saginaw. We've become part of their neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
How are you all going to do? How, how, how do we know you're going to be a good citizen and a steward here in Saginaw?
Because our client is gonna make a forty million dollar investment.
Okay.
On twenty acres of dirt. And, and for that, my opinion, I don't have any data on it, my opinion, if, if I was that entity making a forty million dollar investment, I would make sure it's maintained. I would make sure the people that are living in that neighborhood maintain those houses. I would make sure there is strict enforcement of the leases, because the leases are gonna be geared towards me as the owner, not the tenant.
So, so like me, I've lived here twenty-some years, raised four kids, you know, I, I donated, I've given my personal time to things around Saginaw, done things like that. What are you all gonna do? I mean, yeah, you've invested forty million dollars. That, that's great. Wish you had forty million dollars. But, you know, donating to the Little League basketball team, you know, things like that. I mean, anything.
I, I, I can't speak to that. I, you know, we're, we're, we are so far at the front end of this process. Uh, you know, we, we will pass on to Tricon, which will be the owner of the property. It's, it's an entity that owns thirty-some odd thousand rental units in North America. Uh, we will pass on to them these points. Uh, and I, I don't believe, I, I don't believe they would not do something. I mean, you know, like I said, when you're, you're, when you're investing that kind of money, you are a team player. You are, you know, the, if, if I, if I provide benefit, I get benefit in return. That's just human, almost getting human nature. Uh, i- i- in my head, it makes sense to be part of the community. I don't see why they wouldn't be.
Gabe, what percentage of the Saginaw residents are renters right now?
So our single-family, uh, or our rental inspection program, um, about thirty percent of single-family homes in Saginaw are currently rentals. Um, the adjacent neighborhood, those numbers, and staff did some analysis that holds for the neighbors in this general area.
So they're already rentals, rental folks already in our town. They're in our neighborhood. They're in the neighborhood that we're talking about. So, uh, we're already talking about folks and these folks are just a different type of renter. So. Any other questions for this gentleman? Mary? Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Um, I don't really have a specific question for you, but I just wanted to make it clear. Um, I had mentioned in the July twentieth meeting that I was opposed to this project. And I do have eight points to make to explain my objections. But I wanted to wait until we hear from the public before I make my statements, so I won't be repetitive.
That's fine.
So I didn't want people to think that, uh, oh, I don't have anything to say.
Everybody get a chance to speak, yeah.
I'm just waiting till the public speaks.
Absolutely. Everybody get a chance. Alright, so anything else, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. You got another question for this guy?
Um, you said, and, and I guess I'm confused on your reference to the developers gonna be responsible. I'm not sure what the renters are gonna be responsible for, but, uh, like your yard work, your landscaping. Um, is the renter responsible for that upkeep of their yard and?
Yeah, no, ma'am, no. It is, it is, it is like any other rental community. There is one management company that maintains the entire property. They do all the mowing, all the landscaping. Irrigation pipe breaks, they fix it. Uh, something, air conditioner goes out, the tenant, the resident goes to the management company, says, "My air conditioner's out." They fix it. Refrigerators, all, they're all fully, you know, appliance and everything, homes. So if any, any of that goes out, uh, that is, that is a responsibility of the management company and the responsibility of the property owner uh, to maintain the, the neighborhood.
Okay. So the, uh, renter will have nothing to do with the property as far as any sort of mowing or planting or anything like that?
You are correct.
Okay.
Anything else? All in, all, alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, does anyone from the, uh, ownership group wish to speak?
Counsel, my name is Trey Gordon. I represent the Boswell family. And I've spoken to many of you before tonight about this project and, and, uh, let me just say that the Boswell family has been good stewards for the city of Saginaw for over a hundred years. Whether it's donating land for high school or other projects, um, we've tried to be good stewards. My uncle, who's passed away, my dad, who's passed away, turned down lots of opportunities to develop land because we didn't feel like it was in the best interest of the city of Saginaw. Patrick Farr, at the first P and Z meeting, talked about how we would get, he, he called actually to find out if we would sell some, some of the land. And like anybody else, the first question he asked and other people ask is, "How much is it?" We don't tell anybody how much we're selling the land for. We ask first, "What do you wanna do with it?" And if it doesn't clear that hurdle with us, we say no. So with that in mind, we entered into this relationship with HHS and, um, we feel like this has been a good decision. These developers have worked really hard to come up with a great project, a great proposal for the city of Saginaw. And what you have in front of you now is very different from what was proposed months and months and months ago. Why is that? That is because all of us have worked on this project. City Council approved the masonry agreement. That was a critical component to Carmen Drake and to Paul and some others. That was a big help. The landowners, we held a public forum on our own and there were fifty people there or so. Mr. Beasley was there. Thank you for coming. We provided food. And we quickly learned there's some, sorry, you should have let me know. Um, but we realized that there were some things none of us really want, right? So from that standpoint, we started to build a consensus. And during that meeting, it led to more compromise. And the developers incorporated that compromise into the masonry agreement, which you guys approved on July twentieth. The community, led by Ms. Drake and Paul, have done an awful lot of work and they need to be commended for that. This project is much better for the city of Saginaw based on their involvement. So all of us have worked together to get this thing over the goal line. At the P and Z meeting last week, this was approved unanimously. No one from the public stood up and opposed the project. Not one person. The chairman, Chairman Lewis, said something I thought was very astute. He said, "This is how it should work." When you have every component working together, compromising to come up with a better plan, a better project for the city of Saginaw, this is how it's supposed to work. And he commended everybody that was involved. So we are here today asking for approval for this zoning change, so that my family, the developers, the community, city council, the city staff, who recommends approval of the project, can get this thing over the goal line once and for all. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Gordon? Do you have one, Cindy? Okay, go ahead.
Again, I missed a lot of these meetings because I've been dealing with family matters.
Sure.
Uh, I don't, I don't think we've received all of the information that the residents have received. So, you know, kinda shooting from the hip here. But a lot of the residents that I talked to feel like they have to settle for the lesser of two evils. It's not that they want this development. It's just like, okay, we have to take this because we don't want the other. Um, there's no other options out there. I mean, it, it's like I mentioned before, we've spent a lot of money to find out what the citizens want in this community. Uh, they want, um, you know, retail business. They want places to sit down and eat. And I know those are coming. Uh, they want family venues. They, 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 all the, the, uh, forums and surveys and, uh, summits and things that we've done have never said, "We want more rental places here in town." Not one. Not one. And I just feel like I have to do my part to speak up for the citizens and say that it's a shame that we have to settle for something that we don't want because the other option is worse. Like apartments. Um, I'm, I'm concerned, okay, Kim Lee Horn did a great job on the traffic study. We're talking about expanding McLaRoy to four lanes in the future, but we're gonna have a single-lane cul-de-sac that's still, uh, we've approved the, the design, but not necessarily, we approved the go-ahead to design, but we have not approved the design. So now we got these four lanes trying to funnel down, or two lanes funnel down into one. I understand there's similar developments like this going up around here that are in the ISD. I, I, I just see that this is a no-win situation for our citizens. I'm worried about our schools being overcrowded. I'm worried about redistricting, having to build new schools. Kids who are going to school here now have to go to school here, uh, when they're used to going to school with their friends. Even though the school, when the school district wrote the letter, um, from Mr. Welch back in May, he wasn't talking about the other communities that could possibly be impacting his school district. He's talking about this one development that's impacting his school district. I, I'm concerned about the potential for shortsightedness on the trafficked impact because it's not just this one neighborhood that we're talking about. Uh, even today, you know? I said at the traffic light at, um, eastbound on McLaRoy to turn north onto Saginaw Boulevard, there are times that I've sit through that cycle for five, that light for five cycles before I can make a left-hand turn. Now we're gonna compound that problem with more traffic, even though it's less than what could the other possibility is? I just don't think that we have thought this through for the betterment of Saginaw. And I'm concerned that our citizens have to settle for the lesser of two evils.
I appreciate the comments. I'm not sure if there was a question you wanted me to answer in response to that. I'm happy to do so. We do own tracks one and four on both sides of these two tracks that are neighborhood commercial. And clearly, there's potential for some of the things that you talked about, um, that would help or enhance the community, the area and so forth and so on. And, uh, when McLaRoy's ex- expanded, which is gonna happen according to Rick in the next two to three years, that's certainly gonna help all of that and probably make those two tracks more desirable for some of the things that you just mentioned. And we're certainly happy to look at those.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I, and that's what I was asking. Are there other options available for this property other than this?
Well, considering how they're zoned, right, um, you know, we have one track that's multifamily already.
We can change the zoning on any things. We're trying to do that tonight.
Correct. And again, we feel like this project's clearly in the best interest of Saginaw. Again, we get all sorts of calls.
You do.
Yes.
You feel that way, but the citizens don't feel that way. The citizens feel like they're having to accept the lesser of two evils. And again, I don't know what you think about my sources, but I talk to a lot of people. A lot of people call me. A lot of people talk to me.
Well, I will say there's no longer. Well, I will say, there's no longer a valid petition by the community opposing the project. That's one.
Because they've been told this is a done deal, that they have no other choice.
Well, I certainly haven't said that. I hope that's the case. But we certainly haven't said that. Secondly, we, as the landowner, held a public forum on our own.
Mm-hmm.
And several of you guys were here. Charles was there and so forth.
And some of us were told we should not attend. We were told not to go. And I'm not blaming you for that.
I didn't say that.
I know you didn't.
I would have, in fact, I-
I would have, I wanted to go.
I wish you would have. That would have been-
We couldn't.
And we had a great meeting. I think Mr. Beasley can address that. Everybody kind of had a kumbaya moment when it was all over. And I think everybody was pleased with the progress that we made. We also understand that, let's just be honest, I mean, nobody wants apartments there. I asked that question. Does anybody want apartments on track two? Not one hand went up.
Not one hand went up, no.
Not one. Not one. So-
Again, they feel like they're settling for the lesser of two evils.
So, let, let me ask you this. Have you had anybody, because I know there were some things going around, and Gabe, I reached out to you like a month, month and a half ago, about a gentleman who was some type of developer, I'll put quotes around it, who had this huge thing that said he had spent like fifty thousand dollars or something on. You remember me talking to you about that? So, has anybody came to you to even pitch anything, like, say, a South Lake town square, like they have over in South Lake, anything like that?
No.
Have you all ever had anything, anybody even come in remotely?
To address that specific item that you mentioned, no.
No.
We get a lot of calls for liquor stores. Some guy wanted us to give us the land for a church. We, you know, there's some stuff that we don't, we're not going to do. That's just not what my family is about. So, we only enter into negotiations with someone that we feel like will represent the best interests of the city. And after the hard work these guys have done to try to meet so many of those concerns, the proposal has it in front of you, but there are eight to fourteen, I think, I didn't create it, but eight to fourteen specific items the developers did, just based on the request of the community. So there's a lot of give and take that's happened here with everybody. And I think that's something that everybody should be proud of. Did that answer a question?
Yeah. I mean, my big thing was, there was a thing floating around, some gentleman had a thing, and I just, I think that probably needs to be aired out a little bit.
Yeah, I think all I can say from the staff perspective is, we certainly wouldn't, somebody doesn't start the process with planning and zoning or rezoning until they have a contract, usually with a property owner.
Right.
I don't know that a property this far interior from a major thoroughfare has a lot of commercial desirability. And I don't remember which tracks, but the corner of Old Decatur and McLaRoy Wood, because it's a hard corner, but this far interior, if there was that, I think the market would have already contacted the family and purchased it for that. I think that that case would also have been made at McLaRoy where the, you know, the assisted living, where the fire station is now, if there was commercial, you know. And again, to Councilmember Big Horse's point, the things that everybody wants, the sit-down restaurants, the entertainment venues. Yeah. So I'm not aware of any.
These, we have not gotten a call like that, but these other two tracks are available for those type items that you've mentioned. So, certainly happy to have those conversations, of course.
Any questions for Mr. Gordon? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we've heard from the landowner, from the developer. It is a public hearing, so now we'll hear from citizens in the audience. You don't have to fill out a form. You can just raise your hand and come up one at a time. Please come up. I give everybody three minutes, just so we recycle people in and out, so we won't be here all night. So. Enter and sign in, please. Oh, just sign in. Tell us who you are, sorry, for the video.
For those that don't know, Paul Faleghe, eleven oh eight Spring Hill. With the help of Carmen, we've addressed a lot of these things. And as Mr. Gordon said, we have made some progress and changes. There's still some concerns I have. I just emailed all you guys on this. I'm really concerned about the traffic. In the morning, when three hundred, four hundred cars are coming out of Willow Creek Elementary, and a hundred, if it's one car per family, a hundred and sixty-six going the opposite direction, who's going to direct that traffic? It's not going to happen. The density of these, I'd like to see fifteen feet, just like we do for our residential areas. It's too close. I asked for single-story units for some of these, especially the ones closest to the homes on Spring Hill. The first time the developer gave me this, the second time, it said they don't have any plans. The developer this size should be able to come up with a plan to do some single-story homes for our disabled veterans and people that are handicapped. They don't have that. It's been a long journey. Got to meet a lot of great neighbors that I would have never met. I just don't think this is right for Saginaw. As Cindy mentioned, residents have felt like we got backed into the lesser of evil. The apartments that were proposed at the second forum, there were a hundred and ten units, not two hundred and some units, and many of those were single store, single bedroom, which have a lot less impact than a hundred and sixty-six, three and four-bedroom units on the schools. And the last thing, if this does get approved, I'd like to see the ten thousand dollars that the city gave up come back to the city, whether it be the beautification committee or the parks and recreation. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, I've spoken to you again before. My name's Marilyn Tolliver. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I look a little sloppy. So I apologize for that. I live at ten fifty-eight Spring Hill Drive, right on the corner of Woodcrest and Spring Hill. So, I have been very involved in this proposal because that street that runs right through actually could, if the fire truck couldn't make the turn, would actually end up in my swimming pool. But as Mr. Gordon has said, and as Paul said, that this project has gotten better each time. It has gotten better. Would I love for it to be a South Lake Square, of course, but again, as Gabe said, it's really not very feasible. Would I love for it to be a big park, but again, we know that that, it's, it's already zoned multifamily. So, for, for my, in my perspective, I think that the developer has met a lot of the terms. We're not going to make us happy completely. I don't think that's going to happen because that would mean that it wasn't built. The neighborhood would not, would rather it not be built. But I think that, again, it's a good compromise, and I think that it's something that we could work from. I'm on the school board, so I know the impact of the school district. And Willow Creek is going to get, is going to be full eventually, whether this development comes or something else happens. I mean, things are just continuing to, to build. And there's going to be redistricting, and all those things are going to happen, regardless of what we build on that, on that property. So, I would hope that you would look at this. The planning and zoning committee did, commission did approve it, and I hope that you'll approve this today so that we can get on with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else? There's still time? Yes, ma'am, please. Just state your name so we'll know, and then, please.
Hi, I'm Susan Bentley. I'm opposed to this, and there's a couple of reasons. I want to start with what Marilyn said. Her house is the one with the swimming pool, right here on Westwood. And I don't know, she's looked at the measurement, but she doesn't have, it comes right up to her, almost up to her property line for the minimum amount there on the actual drawing that was sent out the first of the month to all these residents. And, you know, that's a concern that she had, and that has not been corrected. I don't know if she knows that. But also, Westwood, people chose the lesser of the evil because I said at the rec meeting in June, that Westwood could not be closed off, which it needs to be because of the tightness of those roads right there and the children playing there. But that Westwood could not be dead-ended if apartments or anything else went in there. Well, if this can be dead-ended, anything else can be, you know, it can be set up that way for those neighbors. So they don't have to pick the lesser of the two evils. That's the point of the lesser of the two evils, of why they said that, because they do not want Westwood open. Okay. So, the next thing is that I also have concerns. I was involved in some of these emails and helping them form what's going on and how to come before y'all and talk to y'all about things. The reason why people haven't come is because they feel like they've been bullied into it. They feel like they've been intimidated into it. They feel like they've been discouraged from speaking, using their rights to speak up about something that's not good for their community, and then bullied about it. There's been flip-flopping about how many people are going to be there versus millennials. Now it's families, which is it. There's a community behind Home Depot off of Sandshell, past I-35, between Basswood and Western Center, just like this one. You need to go over there and drive and look at it and talk to the people there. They'll talk to you and tell you what it's like to live in that little neighborhood. Lastly, I want to talk about the emails that I was involved with. Charles Beasley was communicating with Carmen about this agreement to sign before and while Mason was also in the emails, talking about how city council was coming to them and saying, "Hey, you should back out of this and go back to planning and zoning," or get an agreement with Carmen and Paul. I have these emails. I have the screenshot of, you know, Charles coming to Carmen and saying, "Hey, this, this, hey, we're trying to get this in agreement. We want you to sign this so they can pull out of going to the July twentieth meeting." Eventually, what happened was Carmen-
You have emails, you have screenshots of me saying what?
You have, you contacted Carmen and said, "We're working on this to get you, to get an agreement together for you."
I don't think it was like that, and I don't think I even emailed. Me and Carmen spoke over the phone, and I told her that her issues that she, the issues that she was addressing, we were going to get them in a development agreement. Not that, "Come on, do this so, so we can get, get done with this." No, I, I attended those forums. I attended everything. I spoke to every, I spoke to tons of folks about this issue. So, I don't want you to make it seem like I was doing this to help the developers, or like I got my-
Well, I don't know what's going on, and that's why I want, I, you know, I appreciate that.
I even spoke to you. I spoke to you at the forums.
So, and, and what was being presented to me is that, from the communications that I was receiving, is that the developer was saying that city council told him to do certain things since there was a meeting, and that from our group, we asked for clarification, when was this meeting, so that we could request a FOIA or any other, you know, dealing with it, trying to ask information. Okay, well, what are you looking for? You know, in the end, the reply back from the developer to Carmen was that, "Oh, well, there really was no meeting." After, he said, "Oh, it was an email." Because she's like, "Is it email? Is it phone call? Did y'all meet in person?" And then he comes back and says, "An email." And then she's trying to say, "With who?" Well, then he comes back and he states, at least in the chain of emails that I received, states that, "Oh, well, it really wasn't a meeting. We were just trying to get ahead of this and, and get this done so that we don't have to go."
Did they say they spoke to Charles Beasley in your emails? No, they did not.
No, I'm talking, no, but I'm talking specifically about communication and a text message, just saying, "Hey, we're trying to, we're trying to get this together." And I want to know why the whole city council wasn't involved in that. Or if there was a meeting, then that needs to be made public so that, that, that date or that conversation, that email chain, whatever it was, can be accessed by the public so that we can look at it. And that takes time. So I think that these things need to be looked at, investigated, questioned, because I think that residents have, need to know and not feel intimidated or feel like this is the lesser of the evils, especially when, I've worked on things, having meetings recorded. I pushed for that four years ago. That was me. Having, for your street, having it blocked off from I L T during school time, I researched. What you would pay thousands of dollars for someone to go and research for you, I did. As a stay-at-home mother, called cities, did research about what was wrong with their city and what they would have done differently with an I L T that came in because the traffic studies underrated it. And about the traffic impact on the community, and they do happen, even with the best of engineers. So, that's just my concern. My last concern is, people come to visit people in apartments. In an apartment complex behind here, there's room for them to park. There's not room for them to have people for parties. People like to have parties, even that live in single-family rental homes. And, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else? We still got time? Anybody else like to speak? It is still a public hearing. Anyone can approach and speak if they would like to. Yes, ma'am, please, come on. Just state your name for the record and go ahead.
Hi, I'm Glenda Johnson. My initial reaction is, let's not make Saginaw look like a rental community. I can appreciate all the work that's gone into it after I've been here and listened to this. I would hope they would have an onsite property manager of some sort that would monitor the parking issues, outside conditions of the home, what's going on in a neighborhood like that, that might put people more at ease about this. And when, when you say rental, it puts a bad taste in people's mouth. To get past that, you know, I think the density is, is what's overwhelming as well. You know, it looks like a lot of homes, maybe small yards. And again, you know, we discussed the, the road situation there. You know, let's, let's not make it so dense, leave a little more green space. Might be more palatable to people. But I think if we have to accept this as another rental area for Saginaw, let's have at least some good management over it, somebody checking things, monitoring, you know, and keeping it safe for the neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Can the developer answer that question about management?
It's onsite management, at least.
All right, so there is onsite management. Okay, thank you.
I do have another question about the lawn keeping. Correct me if I'm wrong, sir. You did say that the backyards were going to be fenced in.
Yes, ma'am.
Wooden fences, chain link fences, rail fences?
Just your standard wooden fence for the backyard.
And so how are you, how was your management company going to go into these people's backyards and mow their backyards?
There'll be a gate.
I'm sorry?
A gate for the backyards.
So, they're going to have to let people into their backyards?
Just, yeah, if you were to-
They won't be locked. I mean, it, the, the entity that owns the property owns the gate, owns the homes. They have the legal ability to go out there and maintain their property. Those, those gates will, will not be locked by the residents that live in those homes.
Is that one true? It's the same situation with the city during homeownership. If you have a lawn crew that takes care of your yard, they also maintain the property.
I mow my own yard, so I wouldn't know anything about that.
I'm with you on that one.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other, still in public hearing? Any other folks wish to speak? Now's the time. If no other public comment, then at eight twenty-eight, I'll take it out of public hearing. I will let, Rick, anything else you want to add? We cover everything? We miss anything out?
I don't, I don't believe so, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think it's all been covered.
Gabe, anything else you want to add on this? Okay. Then I'll go around the horn with city council. Let's start here with Mary. Councilmember Copeland, please.
Yes. As I stated earlier, I have publicly stated I'm against the proposal, but I never have really explained why. Can everybody hear me? And I'll try not to be repetitive. The number one concern, these are all very concerning to me, so it's hard to write them, but the number one on my list is that Saginaw has very little undeveloped land left. We are almost built out. You always want to find the highest and best use for every piece of property in a city. When that city is almost built out, you even want to make a bigger effort to make sure that you have the highest and best use for every piece of vacant land. You hear people make comments, "Well, why can't we just let it stay vacant?" Not going to happen. Not going to happen. Every piece of vacant land will eventually be developed. When the city council has the opportunity to make a decision about what goes in a particular piece of property, we need to take advantage of that and do the best job we can. We don't often, we are not often able to vote on these things. If someone builds something that meets the zoning and does not require a specific use permit and is not some type of special project, like a planned development, we don't get to weigh in on that. So we have an opportunity to do that. And as been mentioned previously, we are desperately attempting to attract the kind of development that our residents have told us they want. And we have not been successful in doing that. So we need to use every available opportunity to help make that happen. And when we do not pick the highest and best use for a particular property, we don't achieve that goal. So we need to work as hard as we can to attract that kind of development. And the, the comments that I have to make are very broad and very general, and they are looking to the future, and they are based on an effort to show continuous improvement in the city. Many of the specific issues that have come up, I also have problems with. But I don't even want to get to those discussions because I don't like the concept. And any improvements that can be made on that concept, it's still the same concept. And I don't like the concept. It's way too dense. The reason, and I am perfectly willing to be corrected if I am incorrect on this, but my feeling is, the reason the applicant had to ask for planned development, because these are residential homes. It doesn't matter if they're for rent or if their owner occupied. Zoning doesn't address that. Zoning only addresses land use. So I wonder why they didn't just ask for a change to Single Family 3. Single Family 3 is our densest zoning for single-family homes. The reason they could not ask for Single Family 3 is because they could not meet the minimum requirements for Single Family 3 in some areas. In some areas, they did meet those. So the only way they could have this many units in this small of a space was to have planned development, because that way, you don't necessarily have to follow the standards set forth in Multifamily 3. And you get to negotiate. That's what a planned development is for. Hey, we can't really meet this requirement, but every planned development that I have ever been aware of, come across in my history of working with this type of situation, which is many, many years, a planned development asks for relief in a certain area. But at the same time, they say, guess what we're going to do for you if you let us do this? We're going to offer so many amenities to you, the city, in this development to make it worth your while to maybe lower some of the basic standards that are in place, minimum standards. Some of those amenities are trails, green space, community building, very interesting and unique architectural designs, some unique lighting, all kinds of things that they can say, hey, we're going to, we're going to make up for this fact that we can't meet these standards by giving you these extra things. So this particular planned development, the only thing I see that they gave us was a swimming pool. You know, is a swimming pool, so. A huge factor in my, my opposition is the fact that if we do approve this planned development request, we will lose the neighborhood commercial zoning. The neighborhood commercial zoning on that entire tract of land, in my opinion, is the most appropriate zoning that exists on that land right now. I've heard people say, well, we can't, we can't support neighborhood commercials there. Well, that's a matter of opinion, and I don't agree with that. And the neighborhood commercial could be such an asset to the surrounding neighborhoods. There could be some wonderful, small, little shops. I'm not talking about a strip center with the one long building that's chopped up into various businesses. You can have a building that has one or two uses. We have one on Main Street that is the, the margarita place and the donut place. They share a building, and it's quite lovely and nice. So you can have separate buildings with two or three uses in a semicircle or something. So it doesn't have to be your old-fashioned, not pleasing, one-long building. I think that neighborhood commercial would add so much, and it would help attract some of these things that we want for the city. And I'm not so much wanting it for more revenue. I don't think we can even decide whether or not that would give us more revenue than this, than this proposal. There's too many variables. We can't decide that right now. But my main reason for the neighborhood commercial is to be helpful to the neighbors and to help attract some more of this type of development. We have done so many things in the past few years in Saginaw to improve Saginaw, and I'm so proud of all the things that have been done. We have a all-abilities playground. We have a food truck park. We have a farmer's market. We have public art. We are building a skilled nursing facility. We are building a, an assisted living facility. All of these things are coming together to give us a, a much better quality of life for our residents. Our voters recently passed this wonderful bond election, so they're telling us, we want these improvements. We're going to have a new fire station. We're going to have a new library. We're going to have a new, senior center. We're going to have park improvements, and we're going to have street improvements. I don't want to take 10 steps backwards by approving this type of, of project. These are popping up, these are new. These rental homes, they're popping up in Texas, they're popping up in Arizona, and I believe in Wisconsin. This is not a proven concept. It may end up being a successful concept. It may not be. I don't want to be the test market for that. We are in a position in Saginaw where we have to be careful what we accept when we have the opportunity to do so. Elephant in the Room apartment building, I'd like to discuss that. Do I want an apartment building there? No. Do I think Multifamily 1 is the correct zoning for that portion of that larger property? No, but that's what it is. We've heard a lot of talk about lesser of two evils. It is very common, I've seen it over and over again, when a developer is trying to get buy-in from a neighborhood or a city council to mention, oh, by the way, if this particular thing is not approved and the usual suspect is a 7-Eleven, they will say, do you want a 7-Eleven there? And then everyone is horrified, and people say, oh, dear, we don't want that, so I guess we better approve this. Well, two comments I would like to make about that. Number one, decision-making. We need to make a decision based on what has come before us, not noise about other things that may or may not happen. This is what has come before us. Do we want it? Do we not want it? The other point I want to make is, when you hear developers say, hey, you might get a 7-Eleven there, that's common. That's a common ploy, a common tactic. But I have never heard a developer say, if you don't approve it, we're going to build the 7-Eleven or the apartment or whatever. Okay, let's say the apartment is built. Is this such a bad thing? Like I said, I don't want it. In a perfect world, I don't want it. But would it really be worse than what is being proposed with this planned development? I think not. Why? We will still have the neighborhood commercial. You're not going to have as many school-aged children in an apartment building as you're going to have in these 162, uh, single-family dwellings with 3 and 4 bedrooms. So potential for school-aged children is much greater with this planned development than it would be with an apartment building. I hope we do not decide to table this. We need to make a decision. We need to come to a resolution. This has been going on long enough. If we vote to table, we are implicitly saying, well, we can see this happening.
We're not going to table it.
Okay, good. Because, you know, let's get it over with, one way or the other. Also, one of the, I believe the family member might have said something about the, the other two pieces of property and how they're zoned, and they're actually zoned, one of them is office professional and one of them is community commercial. Community commercial is much different than neighborhood commercial. I don't know that we could ever attract community commercial there. So I think we, I don't think, I know, we have to make our decision based on what the zoning is today. If that ever changes in the future, that's a completely different situation, not what we're addressing tonight. And one just minute question I have that I saw in the, the background information under development standards, that text, I don't know if you know what I'm, if you have, it said, A, uses, and it said permitted uses, et cetera. And the last sentence, and I just, I just hadn't heard this before, I'm not saying I'm, you know, I just think it needs to be brought out in case nobody has heard this, it says additionally, a duplex shall be permitted as a use allowed by right. So I don't know if it would make a difference to anybody, but I don't know if the people in the neighborhood or up here have realized that, A, some duplexes could be built. I don't, like I said, I'm not going to nitpick about these specific parts because I'm not in favor of the whole project. But I just thought it would be interesting to bring that up in case nobody else. Did, did anybody want to address that?
Yes, ma'am. Our, when those development standards were created is when we created our original concept plan, which was back in January. And that was, that was the first plan that we worked with, with the staff. At that point, there were a combination of detached and duplex units. We've taken all the duplexes out, so it's all just detached now, and that was my mistake, just not taking it out. More, if, if the council chooses to approve the zoning, we are more than happy to take out any reference to the duplexes in the allowed land uses.
Okay, I just thought it was important to bring that up.
Thank you.
And that is, I believe that's the end of my comments, but if I think of something else, am I allowed to speak again?
No, okay, sure, ma'am. All right, Councilmember Big Horse? Councilmember Big Horse, your turn.
Yeah, wow, Mary, that was some really great information, and I appreciate your insight. Lucky for you guys, she took, you know, about half of my speech. In addition to a lot of the things that Mary pointed out, I have a lot of concerns about the pressure that's going to happen on our infrastructure, our streets like McLaRoe, Old Decatur Road, things of that nature. What about our utilities, like our water, our sewage system? I'm worried about the impact, our electric power. I'm assuming that you're not going to put any natural gas into this subdivision? I don't know if you're aware, but in February this year, this entire city was without power. I mean, every transformer, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Protem, but about every transformer in this city blew because of the overload, the stress that we already have within this eight-square-mile city that we call home. And there were some citizens that had no power for over 100 hours. And that's not fair to put additional strain on our existing structure. You know, I, I hear people complain all the time about, I can't access the internet, you know, and for the longest time, where's Chief Spears? They blamed the fires department. You know, oh, there must be a call-in, I can't use my internet. And I mean that in the most loving way. But, I mean, even with COVID coming down, we saw a reduction in the use of our internet here in our city. I'm worried about, you know, bringing in, whether it's 166 or 207 homes and the number of devices that you have, and cars that hook up to the internet, and, you know, what do they call them, rumbas, whatever it is, you know, all these things that access our internet. You know, it's a lot of strain. I'm concerned about the amount of time and effort it's going to take from our first responders. Okay, so you say that the streets are fine and all this other stuff, and you meet the minimum standards, and you've exceeded that in some way, okay, that's fine, but still, we'll bring in, in 166 homes, times four, what, 664 new people in just one little neighborhood, not to talk about the other high-density places that we want to add in on the north end of town, which, by the way, I'm not real happy with the high density. I wish they would have been a lot smaller. With this pandemic that's been going on, you know, we don't want people closer together, we want them further apart. We don't want people sitting on top of each other. Like our city manager, I grew up on a farm. I had 40 acres before I got to my next neighbor, and some of those were too close. Our citizens have spoken what they wanted. We've spent money on citizen summit, we've spent money on community forums, even on the council retreat that we had, we talked about green spaces, we talked about, okay, flying cars, but we didn't talk about high-density living within our city limits. So, even the council, at a different time, did not want to bring this in. Like Mary talked about with neighborhood commercial, we could, I, my husband was performing up in South Dakota, we took a little detour, we went through Colorado, Wyoming, saw some sites, we stopped at Estes Parks. You can ask some of the people here on the council, I hate shopping. I know, I don't make a very good woman, I hate shopping. But I saw something that really struck my interest at Estes Park. They had these buildings, and you could rent these small rooms, and they were far more affordable, and small businesses could start up and test the waters, test the market, test their business skills, and operate a business, and as they grew and felt more confident, then they could go off and either build their own placeum or rent a bigger spot. So, a small, you know, small coffee shop coming in, an ice cream shop coming in, and that's what the people have asked for in the citizen summit, that's what we talked about with the retail coach, that's what they've said we need in this town. If we get unique businesses here in town, mom-and-pop businesses, whatever you want to call them, people are going to come here. Why? Because you don't have it in any of these other cities. The thing that makes Saginaw great is, one, that we are a unique community. We love our neighbors, we take care of our neighbors, we've proven that through the pandemic, we did it through the freeze, we've done it through all the floods and tornadoes. Neighbors look after neighbors, and we want to keep that because that's what Saginaw is.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Tucker? Mayor Protem? Mr. Larson? Mr. Beasley? All right, thank you. All right, then I will close, and I will be brief. So, a couple of things have stood out for me in this whole process, and it's been a long process for all of us. First off, please don't believe everything you read on Facebook. There's a lot of disinformation out there. If you believed everything you read out there, you would think that I own the property, that was a, one thing out there, which is a shock to the Boswell family, that I'm in cahoots with them, that I drank the Kool-Aid, many, many different things, and not just me, but a lot of other folks. So, please, not everything out there is truth, a lot of disinformation in this whole process. This project congealed for me when I looked at initially hearing about it, talking about it, and I just looked at our zoning map. That's the first thing I always do. It's very simple, it's on the website, it's, we have a big one back there. Looked at the zoning map and realized that this planned development is much, much less dense, much more palatable than an apartment complex. It was a very simple decision for me. All the other stuff is a lot of noise, a lot of distractions. It's way, way, and the data presented tonight bears that out. It's a lot, a lot less dense, a lot less traffic, a lot less folks, a lot less people, et cetera, et cetera. So, it wasn't a hard decision for me at all. I appreciate the developers and the landlords working with the citizens, and I appreciate the citizens bringing up their concerns and having the dialogue. That is, again, how the process is supposed to work. This, this thing has adopted, has grown, has changed several different times, several different iterations, a life cycle of its own. So, the point we have now is much better than what we started with, I think we all agree with that. And again, I think nobody here wants an apartment complex. I think that's a lot better than that. The folks, we keep talking about people moving in, that they're outsiders, they're going to be us. We already have renters living amongst us, the folks moving in here will have a connection to Saginaw. There are going to be grandparents moving in, or families, or whatever, people moving close to their kids, they're not going to be outsiders, they're going to be us. People want to live here. People want to live in Saginaw. That's part of the issue, that's part of why we have to manage growth because people want to live here. If they didn't, these folks would not be bringing this for us. If there was no market for this, they would not, they know they can rent these, or they would not bring this to us at all. So, people want to live here. We just have to figure out how to make them live here best with all of us, integrate us into one big, big diverse community. So, that's my big concern, a lot of questions have gone on. Just got to think about it, though, if we vote no against this, we're voting yes for an apartment complex. That's very, very simple. That's why I'm in favor of it. So, very simple. Crazy. I think we're done. Let's, I will entertain, oh, Mary, do you want to say anything else? Because I know you said you wanted to say something else. Okay, all right. Then let's, all that said and done, I took us out of a public hearing, so we're good and legal, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, before I make a motion, I just want to address my comments. I didn't want to address them, I wanted to address them during this motion.
Okay.
So, I'm going to make the motion, but I just want to say that I took time out of my schedules to attend these forums when I was told not to go. I went, I met tons of, tons of residents, I talked to everybody, I got emails, I didn't, I didn't email nobody back, that's why I find it hard to believe how you say you have a copy of something I emailed. Because everybody I emailed back, I said, can I call you, or can you call me? I spoke to people day and night about this. Because I spoke to Carmen about it, because I was like, well, the only way I think we can get your issues, your guys' issues resolved, is through a development agreement. I knew we did that with other developers, so that's, 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 that's the route I was going to go, because I wanted you guys, the residents, to be okay with this development. Because, one way or the other, Saginaw doesn't own the property. We don't, we can't, we can't, we don't have a choice in it. I mean, if the Boswell family sells it to whoever, you know, we don't own the property. So, on that note, you know, I've listened to everything these council members have said, I think the developers have done a lot to, just to kind of meet in the middle. It's a tough subject. I have a Planet Fitness, I'm the middle house from the Planet Fitness that just got built, lost all of my sunlight, my pool is cold, you know, but I got an eight-foot fence, you know, but I didn't want that there. I've, I've been here for, been in that house for 20 years, and it was a petting, a grooming thing back there for a little while, and it got tore down, so it was a big, empty lot. Only thing I got out of that was rats and mice in my damn pool. But, on that note, so, I understand the issue, but sometimes, I mean, as city council members, we can only do what we can do, and I did my best to respond to neighbors, to meet with you guys, to come to these meetings, to, to, to get information of what you guys wanted. So, on that note, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the request for a development plan and changing in the zoning of the 2.86 acres tract H, I mean, 2H3 and 2H4 abstract of 1849. I got to keep going?
No, that's good.
The Albright survey from the multifamily MF1 and neighborhood commercial to the planned development PD, the property is located in the southwest McLeRoy Boulevard, west of the Westwood Drive. Villas at Willow Creek ordinance number 2021-20.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
That was it.
Thank you, Nikki.
Mayor, could I ask for, I apologize, just for clarification, there was some brief commentary and discussion about removing the authority to install duplexes on the property? That is currently in the development standards, if you would like to remove that as part of your motion?
As part of the development, as part of this ordinance, this motion, can we remove any reference to the duplexes in the, in the, in everything?
And also, since he said there's only going to be 166, that document you're talking about says maximum of 173.
So, you want to change the, change your motion to say, amend your motion to add that, Mr. Beasley?
To the amount of homes?
No, 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 no.
To the amount of property homes from?
166.
And I would also like to amend that it, the property only contain 166 homes?
That would be, that is per plan, that is per the development plan, yes.
Per the development. So, it's already listed, okay. Okay, Brandon, is that good?
Yes, sir.
Are we clear?
Yes, sir.
All right, Nikki, second. All those who favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, most of them passes, thank y'all. Item number, we are at 14.
It's my council seat, but.
Item number 14 is, Consider action regarding request for specific use permit to allow operation of a tobacco shop on a property located at 128 North Saginaw Boulevard. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see the applicant here tonight. This is a, a request for a specific use permit for a tobacco shop at 128 North Saginaw, that's the Bond Center, near the corner of McLaRoe and the Boulevard, vacant space in that Suite 100. I will just iterate what, what, what was talked about at the Plan and Zoning Commission. He intends to operate a cigar store, would have a walk-in humidor, and would sell products that would support cigar cutters and, and things of that nature, tobacco. So, I, I think the Plan and Zoning Commission asked pertinent questions about paraphernalia, things that we would typically be concerned about in a smoke shop, and they satisfied the PNC that, enough that they recommended unanimous approval, and so staff recommends approval also.
Where was this located? Where was this located?
It's in the Bond Center, that's just.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
On that, next to the furniture store?
That's correct.
Used to be the T-room.
I believe it was in the old clothing.
Used to be the T-room.
Right.
All right, questions for Rick?
It absolutely will not be a smoking, it's just sell.
There's no smoking on premises, they asked that specific question, so it's just sell and leave.
We have how many in town?
One on 156.
Four that I know of, there's one on Blue Mound also, I believe. That is correct, I believe that was the last one you considered.
All right, questions for Rick? Questions, comments, concerns? When I think about a smoke shop, I think that you can buy cigarettes at Walmart and Walgreens and wherever else, so.
Does that fit on the Boulevard standards of your ordinance?
Or the overlay? It's allowable use?
It's going to, if it has a humidor cigar, it's going to be more of a higher end, is that my understanding, or you don't know?
I, I don't know. I, you know, I would assume that a walk-in humidor is probably selling some nicer cigar, it's not a swisher sweet, if you will.
Probably hard to define a higher end, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Different than just selling cigarettes, I guess.
Right, I mean, we, yeah, they, they sell, I don't smoke cigars, so I know they sell, what is it, from Dominican Republic, things like that. Some of you guys have got to be cigar connoisseurs, help me out here.
All right, any other questions, counsel?
And this is an S U P, so conditions could be added to the ordinance if counsel so wishes.
So.
The applicant didn't even show up.
Yeah, as I'm saying, is this something we should table to, he gets, maybe give the gentleman a chance to come and tell us kind of what he's expecting?
It, it's at our discretion, we can table if we want to. I will entertain a motion, then.
May I make a motion that we table this till the applicant?
It's been a long day, I'm sorry.
A second, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Beasley, second, all those who favor tabling? Good, all those opposed?
It's about to happen.
All right, motion table. Well, no, no executive session, right? No executive session, okay.
No, you don't.
Motion adjourned? Second motion adjourned, all those in favor? 9:04, we adjourn. Long now, y'all.